We were in DeMoto, so we went and stayed.
We were six.
Rested in Airbnb. We stayed like five minutes with them. So beautiful. It's like an hour and a half out of San Juan.
Oh, that's amazing.
Very warm. We tried to plan this trip before.
Recording in progress.
All right. This has been a long time because we were spending there.
Good evening. It is Wednesday, March 6th, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. We are meeting at Town Hall in the Bellotta Meeting Room, and it is 6:30 PM. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. If you wish to join our Zoom meeting, the meeting ID is 865-3049-4155. This meeting is broadcast live to the local access cable channel and on the public access Facebook page, and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. And just one other thing, should there be any technical difficulties during this evening's meeting, and you cannot hear us through Zoom, we will continue, and you would need to come to Town Hall to participate in the meeting. Having said all of that, would you please stand to pledge the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first matter of business is public comments. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes, which can be waived at the purview of the board. Comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law. I would also comment before we begin that our budget update question and answer is where, if you have questions about our budget, that is where you ask them. So don't ask them during public comment, and don't comment during question and answer. All right, thank you very much. Are there any public comments? Is there any on Zoom?
I'm not seeing any.
All right, seeing none, we shall continue. Everyone must have been commented out after last night. I will begin with the chair's report then. At last Thursday's Finance Committee meeting, it was suggested that I meet with the town manager to negotiate additional funds. Dr. Burnham and I did meet with her on Monday, and we were told not to count on any additional funding. There was a chance of maybe $40,000 from additional new growth, but nothing definite. At last evening's Select Board meeting, the town manager stated that there would be an additional $230,000 added to the school budget pending new growth certification and a warrant article from the Assessor's Office. This morning, Dr. Burnham and I received an email from the town manager telling us not to use the $230,000 in our budget planning, so that figure will not appear this evening. Also, at last evening's Select Board meeting, it was stated that the Select Board would put an override on the warrant as well as on the ballot. We will be deciding on the dollar amount this evening. The Select Board needs that number for their March 12th meeting. The superintendent and I met with the town manager, Finance Committee Chair, Select Board Chair, and Park Commission members to discuss future projects. Must discussion needs to be done between the Municipal Building Committee and the School Committee to determine an agreeable path forward with Turkey Hill. We will commence this discussion after the budget is set. At last night's Select Board meeting, two of our earmarked requests, one for network security and one for enhanced 911, were voted on to be submitted to our state delegation. I wish to thank the citizens that have been following this very difficult budget season. I would urge all residents, and I will at each meeting until then, to plan on attending the May 4th Town Meeting to make your voices heard. So we have to review and approve minutes. We have minutes from the regular session January 24th. Were there any discussion on those minutes? Anyone? So if there is no discussion on those minutes, and Mr. Leighton is not on, is he?
He is.
I am.
Oh, he is. I'm sorry, Mr. Leighton. I can't see you that far away. So if there is no discussion, could I even motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of January 24th, '24.
And a second?
One second.
All right, and a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
I'm going to abstain. I have not read them.
Mr. Schoenbrinney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. All right, next is to review and approve warrants. The warrant total as of the 26th of February was $102,872.20. If anyone has any questions on those warrant items, please let us know. And line item transfers, we do have one.
I would recommend passing over this line item transfer for now until we get to the budget report, the quarterly budget.
The quarterly report. All right, so we will do so, and we will take that up during that discussion. Next is the superintendent's report.
I have nothing new to report this week since last week.
All right, so we'll move right along. We're moving right along. Our student representatives' report.
The long stretch to the end of the year has begun. Not much to report today. There's nothing new going on at the primary school. The students at Turkey Hill Elementary School celebrated Read Across America Day, and the students at Lunenburg Middle High School are wrapping up their winter sports and beginning to prepare for their spring sports. That is all.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to add on. I was delighted to be invited to Turkey Hill Elementary School for Read Across America Day. We had a very engaging time with a group of third graders, so I thank them very much for that invitation.
Madam Chair, I would also just like to comment pertaining to student life. I believe our sports teams are all done for the winter season, and across the board, I think our teams achieved above expectations once again with fantastic participation levels as have been demonstrated in the past. And just want to give a shout out to our A.D. and his staff, all the coaches, the students, and the parents for a great winter season. I also just read, I believe, within the last day or two on social media that our Science Olympiad team, I believe, did extraordinarily well
They did very well.
in the recent state tournament. So hats off to all involved, to include the advisors and, of course, once again, the students and their parents.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. That's terrific. Okay, our first new business item is the Lunenburg High School Program of Studies. So we'll call Mr. Santry up. Good to see you, Mr. Santry.
Good to see you. Good evening, everyone. Tim Santry, Principal, Lunenburg Middle High School. Thank you for inviting me here tonight to discuss some of the changes to the LHS Program of Studies for the year 24-25. But before I got started, I thought possibly I could share some positive news of the great things that are going on at the high school. Everyone needs a little positivity. So after our fall MCAS retakes for grade 10, every 100% of our grade 10 students passed the 2023 ELA and mathematics MCAS.
Wonderful.
Excellent. Take just a moment to think about that. These are students that were in the seventh grade, that were learning remotely, to the eighth grade, a hybrid, to the ninth grade, returning with precautions. It is just really a tribute to our educators. It's also a tribute to the supports that we have in our schools put there by Dr. Burnham that are there to support all students. And there's some data that this is working. Our personnel that we have in place is working for our students. 100% of our students have passed that certain criteria for graduation already at grade 10. Also, I was contacted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education last week, and five of our students from LMHS received a Student Achievement Award. So that award is provided to students who fall within the high-needs subgroup category in MCAS that also scored within the exceeding expectations in the math or ELA test. So as you know, as part of our accountability with the state is to move our subgroups from needs improvement to meeting expectations. In some cases at LMHS, we are moving students from meeting to exceeding expectations. Just once again, a tribute to the people in our building and the hard work that we do in order to support students every day. And promise, lastly, about MCAS, this is the last thing, I promise. 29 of our students from the class of 2024 were awarded the John and Abigail Adams Award. The Adams Scholarship Award goes to students whose MCAS scores place them in the top 25% of the district scores, but also have to be in the advanced category in one of the two tests. So if you think about an average class size, I think it was 104 or 105. 29 of our students received that Abigail Adams Award. As Mr. Beardmore had mentioned, congratulations to our Science Olympiad team. First year Lunenburg has ever had a team. 16 high school students participating in Science Olympiad, and they placed in the top 10 out of 71 teams in the state. And then a shout out to Bodie Orney. He placed ninth out of 81 teams in the Harvard University Invitational for Science Olympiad. Just really kind of a microcosm of what we're trying to do with students, which is prepare them to compete globally at the high school, is why it's so critical that we have the components necessary for success in place there. So these are some of the results. A high school should really be the cornerstone of a district, and with these proposed reductions, I really hope that that doesn't erode that cornerstone away. Some more good news. I spoke with Dr. Burnham, and we are able to lock in on a Saturday, June 1st graduation date. I will be getting that information out to families in my weekly email. Correct, Dr. Burnham? All right, just want to make sure. So next, I believe that you have a copy of the Program of Studies for 24-25. I'd like to thank my department heads, my assistant principals, Ms. Tussignot and Mrs. Burns, for helping us make the changes that we had for this year. So with the uncertainty in the budget and what sections will be available at the high school, our strategy moving forward is allowing students' choice to kind of dictate what courses or electives that we will run. So we will have a normal recommendation and registration process. We will look at the courses that were signed up. We will whittle away... What's the matter?
We don't have it.
I don't think you have the document.
I apologize.
Not to worry, so just...
We will do recommendations, and then we will register all students. We'll take a look at those numbers, as the district has, in looking at class sizes. We'll whittle away if those courses or electives that weren't as highly sought after by students, and we'll try to triage our schedule that way. But I just want to be clear, in the proposed reductions, if we have a master schedule and we're removing 24 to 28 sections out of that master schedule, there are going to be conflicts for students when they're signing up for courses. Usually we have two or three a year that we try to work through. There's going to be many, many more than those in this year. So we did have, in addition to the Program of Studies, let's see, we'd like to offer students AP Statistics if possible. Many academic programs at a college level include statistics as a requirement. By offering statistics at the AP level, students could have their own opportunity to receive college credit. Majority of the schools in our mid-watch group offer statistics, both at the CP and the AP level. It would keep Lunenburg Public Schools competitive with our neighbors in those schools, and it would come, the price is right, it wouldn't come at an additional cost. We had purchased textbooks that align with the AP standards and have been approved by the College Board already, so we are already in possession of those textbooks. There were some other minor changes that were highlighted in the Program of Studies, but I'm here to answer any questions that I could.
I've asked Liz to drop it into the folder. I know she's on the meeting. If she... As soon as she can, she'll drop it into the folder.
As soon as she can. All right, so minor changes could be what? Since we don't have it?
Oh, just minor grammatical edits.
Grammatic kind of things.
I believe we're moving like a UA credit to a Social Studies credit. Some very minor changes. Once you receive the Program of Studies, if you had any questions, I'd be happy to come back and answer those for you if you'd like.
Okay.
Nothing earth-shattering
Nothing earth-shattering.
besides the AP Statistics.
Great. Are there any questions for Mr. Santry?
Are we expected to approve this, or is this a, just sort of an informational thing?
It says action, but generally, we do approve it. If the only addition of substance besides grammatical changes would be the AP Statistics, we certainly could do that. Did you have a question?
I was just wondering about how many kids you were expecting in the statistics. Was it just going to be one class running?
Last year, we ran a stats, but not an AP stats, and 33 students signed up, so we actually had to maneuver around that. The actual enrollment was about 28, but now we're looking forward to this registration process and seeing how many students sign up.
Oh, I love that. Okay.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mrs. Santry, you and I have had many conversations about the number of AP courses that we offer, and my concern about the scheduling and budget burden that that puts on you and us. Could you comment a little bit about, you know, what this does in terms of the mix of our AP classes and, you know, just a little bit more color commentary through that lens?
Sure. We have had that conversation before on sometimes when you offer too many AP courses, you're pulling from the same pool of students, and it sometimes becomes problematic when you have singletons in the schedule. This year, with our strategy of student choice, if we don't have enough to run that AP Stats, then that is how we would whittle down. So really, we allow it for students to determine if they're going to take it. I understand your concerns around AP Stats. The feedback I am getting from my department heads as they work in that mid-watch is that it's an important component to a high school course of studies, so I've brought it to you in order for it to be approved.
And don't get me wrong, I appreciate it, and I think you know that I support achievement and differentiation, and I want to have as many as we can offer. The reality of the situation is, is we are a very small system with obviously very limited resources and executive leadership that isn't particularly concerned, in my opinion, about how we support those resources. So we're put in a position here where we need to be very conscious of how we balance that. So suffice to say, if there isn't adequate enrollment in any AP class, you're not going to run it and find other opportunities to put people in classrooms where we're maximizing the effectiveness of that teaching resource.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sounds good.
Is this the first time you've run scheduling the student demand? What did you call it?
Student-based. No, it's similar. We'd never remove something from the Program of Studies, but this is a unique year, right? Because we could have removed some courses beforehand, but what if, what if students, you know, if I removed a course and then 24 wanted to take that course and I had already removed it? So it's another step in the process. We will whittle away after the students register.
Will you keep us updated on how that process goes?
So the process starts here tonight with the approval, and then we're looking at teachers reviewing the recommendations and the registration process during our advisory blocks, and then we're hopeful for the last week of March or the first week of April to begin the actual registration, get those numbers to our guidance counselors, and then that's when we begin to cipher out which classes we can run.
Thank you, Mr. Santry.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to approve the...
Yes, Action Ball?
Yes. Sorry.
I wonder if I could ask a couple of questions?
Certainly.
Thank you. I would applaud you for adding the AP Stats option. I think that's a great opportunity for our students if they can fit with the schedule. Two questions I had. One was in regards to the AP Stats. Do you think this could potentially decrease the number of AP Calculus students and possibly skew the data, how many kids are taking AP Calc in the future?
That's a great question, which I don't have any data for, Mr. Leighton, and so I think I'd be able to better answer that question after we went through our registration process. But as I understand, those are kind of two different paths in college, would be AP Calc or AP Stats, whether what your course of studies was. So I was hoping we'd be able to open up two separate pathways for that. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. And then the second question I have, is it likely that there could be a course listed in the handbook that also doesn't run because of the numbers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now that we got Mr. Leighton's question, do I have a motion to approve the Program of Studies?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
And then a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrinney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Okay, next is the Student Opportunity Act Plan.
So I'll invite our Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Annika Scott, to come up and speak about this. You have, you should have screen shared. I made you a co-host, so if you want to pull it up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Give me one second to share my screen so I can show you what I'm talking about at home. And in your folder, I dropped the Student Opportunity Act. So every three years, districts are asked to write a Student Opportunity Act for DESI. They gave us guidelines. I attended a webinar in order to write this, and today I met with a representative from DESI who said this was in great shape to present to the school committee. We're going to look for this to be posted and open for public feedback for a few weeks as well, before it's due on April 1st and before you're able to officially approve it. So we had to analyze our data, and we looked at things like MCAS, iReady, vocal data, which students take on the climate following MCAS, our module assessment data, and we looked specifically at any subgroups which were showing a disparity. We do see a disparity in our special education subgroup versus, or students with disability subgroup, I should say, versus students without disability. That is a greater disparity than any other subgroup. We noticed it in MCAS and in iReady. We also see a lesser disparity, but still a disparity with students of, who are Latino or Hispanic, and also those with low income. So we need to consider that in all of these. We were asked to pick, based on the analysis of the data, three evidence-based practice areas that we would focus on, and those are our only focus, but they're asking us as part of this plan to explain and choose. So if you see in Section 5, we have chosen... The first one is supporting curriculum implementation, and they understand that we're already underway with that, but that we're continuing to not only implement our Tier 1 curriculum, but Tiers 2 and 3, so supporting students who need targeted interventions and specially-designed instruction. We're working on using curriculum materials, high-quality curriculum materials across the board there. And of course, we're moving forward with other purchases, such as this year, our process to purchase middle school math materials. The second evidence-based practice area we chose is a comprehensive approach to early literacy. So following the early literacy screening guidelines, we are already screening students for reading difficulty using iReady and DIBELS, but we need to tighten up our process for following up with those students, notifying families, which we already do, but then breaking down the reading difficulty in terms of what exactly, what area of literacy they're struggling with, and how we can best support them there. And then finally, the third practice area we chose is high-leverage practices for students with disabilities. Since we are seeing the biggest discrepancy there, we're going to focus on training staff in the high-leverage practices designed for students with disabilities, have our literacy and math specialists work with special education teachers to assist with developing scaffolded supports, explicit instruction, grouping, and adapting curriculum and tasks based on students' specific learning goals. Those are the areas we'll be focusing on, and I know the last process of Student Opportunity Act, they allowed us to amend over the three years. Any questions on this?
Questions? Yes.
So I'm looking up what high-leverage practice means.
That's my question, too.
High-level practice would be, I mean, I don't have the definition that they provided. The way I understand it is explicit practices that support students who require specially-designed instruction and specific to their disability, making sure we're not kind of, you know, I'll give an example. The Wilson Reading Program, we've been making sure we don't, any student with reading difficulty doesn't necessarily need Wilson. Sometimes they need a different approach or other skills, so we want to really break those down in terms of literacy. And we'll do the same for math and other subjects.
How do you identify these students?
Students with disabilities?
Is it specifically as outlined in the IEPs, or does the state have a different...
There's a whole process for identification and qualifying for an IEP, and then once we have one written, we need to legally follow that. But, you know, if there's a goal, there are a number of ways to reach that goal, and we want to heighten our practices with reaching those goals.
Okay, so in here, we're referring to the ones...
Who have already qualified with a disability. Yep. Yes.
Does high leverage mean that like you're doing something that will, I guess, it's like a buzzword, and I'm like reading their website, and it has more buzzwords, but none of the buzzwords are, they're all like defined by other buzzwords, so it's hard for me to understand.
So the, what I included here with... So, the, what I included here with developing scaffolded supports, explicit instruction, grouping, and adapting curriculum and tasks based on their specific learning goals is language from DESI that I took within this evidence-based practice. So, I think that's where they're getting at. I can get further clarification for you if there's anything else we left out.
No, I think the problem is, like, I don't have any of these vocabulary words.
Sure, sure.
So, like, when you define on one word with another word, I don't know, I just go find out. So, I'll just, I'll do homework, and if I have questions, I'll ask.
Also practices that hopefully will, will make a significant impact on students and help them to grow in their, in their learning.
If I have questions, I'll ask you.
Mr. Beardmore?
Sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Could you talk me through, first of all, how this document was built?
Sure. So, the state provided not only a template with specific questions that you see here written in bold, which I copied to my, my Google Doc. I will need to enter this after it's approved into GEMS, which is a system through which we enter our grant information, et cetera. So, this is going to be due on GEMS, but in the meantime, I wrote it on, on Google Doc. So, I had to follow their template specifically. They even gave us samples from other districts to show, you know, the length of writing they were expecting, and, like I said, offered a consult to make sure we were on the right track.
Has this been reviewed or commented on by the faculty yet, or, or other administrators?
That's this open period for the next two weeks.
Right.
Okay. And how is that information going to be collected and reported?
We'll be collecting that through the LPS email account. So, we'll blast this out to all parents and the faculty and advise them that if they had feedback, that they should send it to lps@loonenburgschools.net. And we'll monitor the emails that come in.
And the feedback period is effectively the next two weeks until we meet again?
Correct, because this body needs to vote and approve it before it's submitted. And our last meeting before the April 1st deadline is our next meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll review it at our instructional leadership team meeting. The state also gave us, we have a list of evidence-based practices to choose from, and they do encourage you to, to select those, you know, based on your, your data analysis, and you can continue with work that you're already doing.
Okay. That's fine. I, my preference would be to see a document that represents faculty input prior to coming to the school committee. But that's just my own personal view. I'm looking forward to seeing feedback on this document.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you.
Mr. Leighton, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Leighton. I told you.
I think that was a no.
I guess not. Okay. We will keep going then. Next is the FY '24 Quarterly Budget Report. So, this is a long-awaited opportunity since the departure of Mr. Cassidy. We are happy to have this back on our agenda.
So, the team of financial consultants, our two liaisons from the company that we contracted, they come in and they work onsite one day a week. But they do work on our budget-related issues throughout the week. We had a meeting a week ago with the two consultants, those who facilitate grants, so Juliana Hanscom and Annika Scott, as well as Secretary from the Business Office, Liz Peterson, Heidi Spinney, who handles accounts payable. We, we all met to walk through the budget line by line, to see where lines were in deficit and what would have put them into deficit, and if things were, should have been charged to a grant, that's being taken care of. And if we were, in fact, truly in a deficit in a line, we were looking for other lines that we felt that we could move funds to cover that deficit. So, at a high-level overview, there was a deficit in the dues and meetings in the Central Office category. That's because the NIASC membership was charged to the Superintendent's Office, and that should be attached to the high school. So, they are going to work with Town Hall to charge that back to the appropriate location, and that will clear that deficit from, from that line. There's another deficit in contracted services. However, if you take a look, that's because there's an encumbrance, a large encumbrance, that's actually putting it into deficit. You'll see that in several locations in the, the budget report, because the new Director of Finance at Town Hall is approaching things in a, in a different way. So, we are encumbering money to be sure that for any bills that may come in late in the year, that there's, that there's money set aside to, to pay those bills coming in.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
I don't think I have that.
Yeah, once again.
I did this afternoon.
I don't have the document.
Three, six, 24-year-to-date budget?
Yep.
Okay, so this...
So, this right here?
This is, I can't read this. It's in, it's not a spreadsheet, it's a PDF, and I can't read it because the lines cut off, and then go down below, there's about 20 blank pages.
Yeah. Mine renders fine. I think the problem here is that what we're, what we're seeing is the... Okay.
No, scroll down.
It's just reading differently here.
There's another page, and it goes on to the next page, but I can't line up line by line. I think we need to hold this till next meeting, when we can get a spreadsheet copy and not a PDF. See, this is 58, page 57, they're just...
Yeah, this document is not workable.
So, it's easier if we get spreadsheets as spreadsheets and not PDFs.
It's different.
Is it supposed to be blank after page 10?
Oh, wait, there's more.
Okay.
If you go down to page 27.
Oh, there it is.
That's the next line.
It, it basically renders as a document that's in portrait that should be in landscape.
Hang on, she's looking.
If you could share the spreadsheet with us.
I'm working on that right now.
She's trying.
And I do find it helpful, instead of PDFs or spreadsheets, if we could get the spreadsheet.
If you refresh, you should have it.
Okay, if you refresh.
Okay. There it is.
Okay, what is this, three, six, 24-year-to-date budget? Okay.
There it is.
Mine's a spreadsheet.
Nope, that's the same thing.
I have the line item transfer.
Well, I just shared the SC 3, 6, 24-year-to-date budget as a spreadsheet.
It said it was a spreadsheet. Oh.
Yeah, this is still rendering the same way, at least what I'm looking at.
Let's see. No, this looks different than what I had before.
That's the line item transfer.
Oh, well, that's why it looks different than what I had before. And that's a PDF.
Oh, yeah, same thing.
What I have here is still what was put in here at 6:39.
I went out of the folder. Go out of the folder.
Oh, my goodness. All right.
I haven't, you emailed it to us.
I have it out of the folder.
I got an email for it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's how I got it. Now mine looks like yours.
With the highlighted. See, we didn't have the highlighted.
This makes a lot more sense.
Are we all on the same page?
Your troubleshooting skills are excellent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we try again.
All righty.
Take two.
So, in the section of the budget for Central Office, there's a contracted services line that is in, looking like it's in deficit, is only in deficit because there's an encumbrance that exceeds what's in the line. You'll see several of these throughout the budget. We're leaving them this way. We'll monitor what the actual payments out of this line look like as we go month to month. We're going to have one of those big meetings every single month and go through line by line. It's possible that that line actually never goes into deficit if we, if we pay everything that needs to go out of that line, and it's less than what is currently encumbered. Again, this is because we have a new Finance Director at Town Hall who is practicing in a different way. So, we're looking to make sure that we're encumbering money in the appropriate line based on projections that may go above the budgeted line, so that when bills come in, there would be money in there.
I work with encumbrances all the time.
Yep.
So, like, I get that. Typically, it's you've ordered a service that has yet to been delivered.
Yep.
And therefore, you are waiting for a, an invoice or the service itself, but you have, you have put said service on order. Is that more or less...
In some cases, it may be a service. In other cases, it might be a utility bill.
Wow.
That we've encumbered the money based on projections, based on year-to-date, what is it going to take us to pay the bills through June 30th?
Okay.
And those projections may exceed what's actually in the line, and the encumbrance is based on the projections. The actuals, in the end, may not actually put the line into deficit at all.
And this is what the Town Finance Director has asked us to do?
There are different practices in place. They didn't specifically say encumber in excess of your line, but we need to have the money encumbered. And it's encumbered largely because we've increased a PO. So, there was a requisition put in the system, and rather than have to enter another requisition later on, we've requested to increase the PO, which is encumbering money, which is potentially looking at like it's putting the line in deficit. But it's not technically in deficit yet, is what I'm trying to say, because that encumbered money has not actually been spent out. So, as we check this a month from now, two months from now, we may get to the point of saying, we don't, we won't need all of that encumbered money to pay the actual bills that we're anticipating now, and we will release that encumbrance.
I guess, who decides that the encumbrance is released?
That's actually a team decision. So, as an example, if this is an encumbrance that was put in play by, let's say, the Facility Director, and he has processed the bills, and he says, Kate, I don't think that we're going to need the rest of this encumbered money, then he has a conversation with me, I'm also having a conversation with our finance folks. If they concur, then we'll release the encumbered monies.
Okay.
Computer contracted services is over the line slightly. That's being handled by a transfer from another line, a line item transfer that you'll have tonight. Contract-related services, this is for special ed. We have been unable to fill some key positions, speech-language pathology, school psychology. So, we've contracted consultants to fill the gap. However, that should be charged to the grant. So, it's, it's going to be, again, our folks will work with the folks at Town Hall to charge that overage back, back to the grant. There are a few items that you'll see in here that have been remedied by a prior line item transfer that was approved by the school committee, but it had not yet been recorded when our consultants ran this download report in early February, when they first arrived. So, some of those have already been rectified. We, you'll see that there are several substitute lines that are in deficit. We have several long-term subs, particularly at the Turkey Hill, and unfortunately, they were charged against the regular sub-line. So, we're, we're going to take care of transferring money from the account that it should have been charged to in the first place to cover where it has actually been charged. Scrolling way down.
Transportation expenses.
Line 181 is over slightly. That'll be handled by a transfer, a line item transfer. Same is true for our summer guidance. We had, we had a guidance counselor previously at one of the, at the elementary school that moved up to the high school guidance office. So, we paid a handful of days over the summer for her to come in and get situated and acclimated and meet with the administrators, so that she was ready to, to handle her new role as Guidance Department Head when school opened. So, we'll be charging that, we'll, we'll be covering that with a different line item transfer. The psychologist salaries, again, that was contracted service. So, that deficit is going to be charged back to the special ed grant.
Wrong, yeah.
Yep. Transportation, as I said, we didn't budget fully for 11 full buses, so we are going to see the need. However, that is the exact projected need for the rest of this year. So, moving monies from a different line to, to cover that, we should zero out there for the year. The next two lines in deficit are connected to the Athletic Department. Those will be reclassified or charged back to the revolving account for athletics. We had an overage, too, for high school advisors, and that, too, will be reclassified back to the high school student activities account. We have had a need for a good bit of overtime at the elementary school for custodians. So, we're going to be making a transfer to, to cover that overage as well. There was a deficit for the heating charges fuel oil line. That's based on actual cost. Mr. Heavy took care of that. That was largely fueling the generators. You see a deficit for the electricity line and the telephone charges. But if you look immediately to the left, you'll see that there's an encumbrance in those lines that is putting that line over. Same situation as before. We'll hold the money, and if needed, we'll transfer to cover if that's an actual, but it, it may not be. We may be able to clear that encumbrance and not overexpend that line. So, we're going to continue to monitor those.
That is specifically the line that was underbudgeted, the...
The electricity line?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And again, the encumbrance is just based on projections.
Is our electrical usage going up?
I can't say for sure. I don't have any data on that. But I don't believe so. I don't think we've been leaving extra lights on or...
No, I mean, they're all on timers. Got to leave a ton.
It was a forecasting error last year.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure that was it, and this isn't going to be, you know, every year, we're just...
Well, I'm trying to properly budget the lines in the next fiscal year. We have a deficit in the repair of equipment maintenance, and that, again, is due to an encumbrance. And lastly, the sped tuitions for private out-of-district placements is over. However, we're going to charge that with circuit breaker.
How does that work? Is that last year's circuit? Because we don't get reimbursed till the next year.
We'll classify that so that we will use the circuit breaker monies.
From previous years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this the whole special education tuition private, or is this?
Total.
Okay. And when you do the circuit breaker, you get only a certain portion paid back?
Mm-hmm.
You have to pay like a deductible?
Yep.
Is this like the deductible amount? Or the stuff that's over the deductible?
It's not, it's not over the deductible. We had, this is complicated. You don't want to be me right now.
This is the most complicated thing I've ever heard.
We had an additional tuition for an out-of-district placement in the budget this, that we had to put into the budget this year that was not previously budgeted. So, I, that's part of it.
But could...
And we're certain we're getting this money?
Mrs. Yanscom, would you like to come up and talk about this line?
No, we're not.
Inquiring minds want to know. This is the one with the overage of 125.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
So, that's about the cost of the additional OSD rates?
Yeah.
Went up? Not your deductibles, but your extra taxes that they raise up that you can't... We did have that extra tuition in there. The circuit breaker monies are based on what we paid last year. So, that money is set. We are getting that set amount for this year.
Okay.
And then our tuitions for this year will get that reimbursement next year. It's always a year behind, but we do have the monies from last year, and they can roll over for one year.
Okay, so, we're definitely going to be able to cover the one?
Definitely have that money.
Got it.
That money is projected into our revenues, though, isn't it? Like, for school year, last school year, what was it, '22 to '23?
I don't know that we project it as revenue as much as we anticipate that there will be funds.
I put it in.
As anticipated.
As anticipated.
Correct.
I give a 70%. I give a 75%. Years past, I even gave some 60s, but it's been roughly 75%. So, that is projected, but it did end up coming through as 75% last year.
Oh, we got 75?
I guess that's where I'm hung up here is, it's whether it was projected at 70 or 75, the delta is in $125,800. It's probably $7,000 or $8,000, not even, $6,000 or $7,000 in difference. In other words, these were projected revenues for the projected income or something for this year that was fit into the budget. So, what I'm getting to is, is where are we getting this $125,000? Is this money that we anticipated for this year that we hadn't planned on spending? Or is it money that we didn't anticipate for this year that we now have available to spend?
It's money that we now know how much it is based on how much we spent last year.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're always a lag year behind.
I understand that, but we have in our current, the budget we're looking at right now has anticipated circuit breaker revenues in it, I believe. That's based on our encumbered expenses for the current year. Last year, when we made the budget for this year, that projected, that projected income was based on what we did last year.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, she just explained that it could have been 70%, it could have been 75%, it came in at 75%, but the difference in those revenues is not $125,000. It's got to be substantially less than that.
I don't think that we plan...
We plan on getting a certain amount back.
Right.
But for that new tuition, we don't have those circuit breaker monies until the following year.
Right. But we have to spend that money this year. We can't, we don't have the benefit of saying...
We can roll it over one year.
But you're saying, even though we have a new cost this year, there is sufficient money from the circuit breaker reimbursed to pay for this year?
Perhaps Mr. Cassidy had rolled some of that over from the prior year.
Okay.
Circuit breaker account.
All right, this is so confusing. We're covered.
We're covered.
Circuit, right now, we are covered through circuit breaker, yes.
Good, okay.
Do we keep that in a revolving fund?
No.
More or less.
It's got its own account.
It doesn't work like normal municipal financing.
And we're hoping to get a better handle on it with the new...
Yeah, so, I mean, I would, I would like to see an explanation on this rolled into a single document, just with current year numbers or last year number, current year numbers.
And that's what we had asked...
The cash flow is basically what I'm looking for here, right?
To see what's left in that account? That's what we've been asking, I mean, that's what the business people are working on. They're trying to get through so many other things, but yes, they will be getting down to that.
All right, fair enough. I mean, you know, we're in the year, so we have a little bit of wiggle room here. I understand that, but it, I think you can understand it. It's difficult to digest this.
Yeah, it is.
We can cover this cost, though.
Yes.
For this year, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Abbott and Costello are going to ask you questions next. I feel like...
I've seen Abbott and Costello as a who's on first, what's on second.
Yeah, you just keep answering. This is the most complicated thing.
It is, it is.
Sorry. Thank you for the explanation.
So, now, back to the line item transfer.
That makes a lot more sense why we waited.
Now, you have less questions about that one. Nope, I don't see it in here.
I have it here.
Maybe I need to refresh.
Is it the contract?
There's another document I can add for you so that you can see line for line. This line's over. We're transferring that exact amount from this line. This is our traditional form where it lists out all of the funds that we're moving to cover.
Okay. I'd like to see the line-by-line one. I get that it's the same in the end, but it helps me. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Who's Paul Livingston?
He is one of our finance people.
Okay. Is he ours, or is he a contractor?
He's a contractor.
Okay. I was...
I didn't hire anybody.
Does he want to be our...
I was trying to figure out...
Because if I had, they'd be standing here in front of you now explaining all of this.
I felt really out of touch. I'm like, I don't know who this is.
That's who that is.
I felt that I knew everyone.
Marlene DeLeo is the other.
Okay.
In case you see that name attached to anything.
To anything. There you go.
Okay. So, we're moving from various line items, a total of $78,933, to offsets the deficit of lines totaling $78,933.
So, do we need a motion?
We do.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfer of $78,933.
I'll second that.
Then, we need a roll call vote.
Mr. Laytonen?
Yes.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Skolbrini?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshamo?
Yes. Okay. We got to do that one.
Yep.
All right. Now, the warrant article submission, and I will take that one. So, I don't know if you can share that?
I am, yeah.
Thank you. So, under the advice of the town manager, it was suggested that we write a warrant article to pay for the network security upgrade that is in our budget for next year. Pending that the warrant article does pass, that money that we have in our budget for next year can be used for something else that we desperately need. But we desperately need the network security upgrade. So, it is also the same network security upgrade that was forwarded to the legislators for an earmark. Earmarks are very iffy at best, and this year, all the ones that were granted were taken away. So, nothing to count on. This would be a much better option if this would pass. So, it reads, "To see if the town will vote to transfer $82,119 from free cash to pay for network security upgrades for Lunenburg Public Schools or take any other action relative thereto." The language comes from the town manager. Because I didn't know how to do that.
Can I just make one...
You can say whatever you like.
Can we change or to and/or? That's like the most lawyerly nerdy way of writing it.
This is the way they do it in the warrant.
Oh, they have to do it this way?
It's just, it's just how it's done.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why I had her write it, because I know it's like...
That said...
...wantsling.
I am 99.99% sure that this will get read as it is written here. I think that to keep our options open, we may want to amend this to say, to see if the town will vote to tran, to raise and appropriate or transfer from free cash a sum of money, or a sum of $82,119. I just want to keep our options open here, given the situation that we're in, that maybe this isn't a transfer from free cash, maybe this is a different source. We will ultimately come to an agreement in terms of how it would get read in, but I think we should present the warrant article in a way that gives us the most possible leeway.
Well, you know more about this kind of thing than I do. She clearly said that's where the money was coming from.
I understand her thinking entirely.
Okay.
And I understand her motivation on this, and it's, it's, this is all, I've been very critical of the town manager lately. This is, this is all good. But I think that we should request that we give ourselves a little bit more leeway over the coming months, in the months before this comes to town meeting.
I can't see how that would hurt.
I think...
Because you have the or in there. So, if that's the best place for the money to come from, then they'll take it from there anyways.
I think we need to explain, whoa, it's getting edited while I'm looking. I think we need to explain why we're asking for this and why it's not coming out of our regular budget.
That'll be, the warrant article has to be written as it's going to appear in the warrant. This will be presented.
Yeah, we can, we will talk about it there.
Yes. Okay.
It, you won't just see it up on the screen and have everybody...
I think we might talk about it.
Somebody will jump in and talk about it.
Tonight, too, just if people are watching and...
Well, because it is an attempt to help us to maintain money in our budget.
Okay.
That's, that was the discussion that we had with the town manager. And when I, as I read in my CHRS report, when I said, "We need more money. You have no money. What can we do?" This was a suggestion so that we could supplant this in our budget with something else that we needed, should this pass.
The history on this is that the need for this arose after the capital planning process.
Right.
And dead to rights, this should have been part of that process and part of our request.
But it was after...
The timing didn't work. So, as a result of that, we have included this in our budget. There is free cash that has yet to be directed from the town manager in the current budget. There's free cash available.
FY24.
FY24 free cash. It is not, free cash that was certified in October. It, I don't, I don't know if it's called FY24, FY23. I don't know how, I don't know how the nomenclature works, but it was certified this past fall.
But it's not FY25, I guess, is my question.
No.
Because there's no free cash yet.
Right. There's no free cash for FY25 yet. So, so, what this gives the town manager, or the town, town meeting, the ability to do is to pass a budget and then pass this appropriation as a transfer from free cash. And this follows the town fiscal policies because it's a one-time expense. You wouldn't want to spend free cash on, you know...
Salary.
Salaries, right? Or expendables that you're going to replace every year. So, so, this is, like, this is actually, as I said last night in my comments, this is actually a really creative way to address some of the budget issue, you know, the budget stress that we're feeling and, and give us more leeway potentially to restore a position if this were to pass, right, later on down the road. So, I think that this is a good thing. I think we want to support it. My, my suggestion is, is that we just amend the language a little bit.
I amend it. Yeah, I saw. I'm fine with that.
Okay. So, the, somebody has just made an edit in here.
Yes.
Yeah, it was fun to watch.
Let me read, let me just read it through, because I do think the wording still needs a little bit of work. To see if the town, the current wording is to see if the town will raise, will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer $82,119 from free cash to blah-bidi-blah.
It has to be flipped.
It has to be flipped. So, it should say, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from free cash a sum of $82,119 to pay for." I think...
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate...
Having gone through thousands of these over the last several years, I think we're, I think we're in the ballpark of what's acceptable for a warrant item.
All right.
This isn't asking for too much from the town?
No.
Okay. Because we're also asking for...
No, I mean, the cash is available. By the way...
I want as much as possible.
Free cash is available. The town manager felt she could do it. I have no problem with asking for this money.
Yeah, no, and I think this is, I think, as I said, I think that this is a very good creative idea. Good use of the money. If, you know, if we had gotten it into the capital planning process, it probably would have been above the line. The capital plan is supported by free cash. Like, this makes all the sense in the world, in my, in my opinion. And I appreciate the town manager's creative thinking on this.
Yes. So, Brian, did you have any thoughts?
No, just that I support it. I think it makes sense.
Okay. Then, do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the language of the warrant article as currently drafted for submission to the annual town meeting. Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote.
Mr. Laytonen?
Yes.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Skolbrini?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshamo?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, next on the docket here is the assessment report. Now, my understanding...
You have the report. We are not going to take time this evening to go over any of it. We will cover the midpoint when we come in in June with the end-of-year benchmark to review all of it. But at least you're, you're getting a bit of a snapshot as to the progress that's being made so far this year.
And if there are any questions, I'm sure we can forward them.
You may.
Okay. If that's all right with everyone?
This will be posted, or is already?
Yeah, it should be, I think. I didn't check the online, but...
No, I mean, I have the document on the website. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Next is the facilities update. Mr. Hevee, we're happy to have you this evening.
Thank you for having me. My name's Eric Hevee. I'm the facilities director for the school. Before I start, I just want to plant a little seed in your, in your head in regards to facilities. This is a quote that I got from the planning guide for maintaining facilities, and it states, "When maintaining a school, we pay not only for brick and mortar, but also student and staff well-being. Effective school maintenance protects capital..." Effective school maintenance protects capital investments, ensures health and safety for our children, and supports educational performance." And I mention that tonight because when people think about facilities and grounds, they don't always think how that supports the educational portion of the students and staff. So I have this as my signature on my email. So every time it goes out, um, hopefully it's a reminder of what facilities and grounds means to the school districts. So I just wanted to plant that in your mind, so as time goes on, think about that.
Thank you.
And, um, hopefully it'll be a reminder of what we do here at the school. I have a few documents here that I just want to review, just a quick, quick update. Uh, the first one I'll be looking at is the district building update. And what I did was, um, you know, I've been in this position less than sixty days. And I wanted to give Dr. Burnham a, an update on some of the stuff that I've encountered in several areas. And, uh, this one document was just to highlight some of the problems that I've come across and had to address. So in the primary school, um, we've been having an issue with the dishwasher. And, um, that dishwasher had, in my opinion, has reached its end of life. It's as old as the school. And, um, we've been having a lot of problems with, uh, that particular machine going up and down. So I'm in the process now of getting quotes to try to replace that. And I've been working with the director of food services, um, and keeping her up to date as well on, uh, what we're doing. Just a quick note on, um, ongoing heating issues with the classrooms at primary school. We have issues with univents and, uh, controllers. Now, the univents, uh, the, the issues are, you know, actuators that control the amount of hot water that comes into the, the coils on the univents. Some of those are going, so we need to replace them. So, um, we have, I have a plan that, um, I'd like to go in and, um, get that evaluated, so I'll be looking at that over time. And you don't know the problem until it happens. So, you'll see more of this coming up down the road. Um, and in the primary, we have the emergency nine-one-one compliance, um, telephone upgrades that we have to address. Um, I put it on here to put it on the radar. Just because it's something that we have to address, it's, it's law right now. Turkey Hill, we had two kitchen proofers, which are heaters that warm the food when the kitchen staff cooks. Um, we had, uh, we had issues with those two, and, and talking with the director of food services, uh, it was recommended that we replace those, so those are on order as of right now. Um, and there's a cost associated with that.
Is that the cost for both?
That's for both of them, yes. Um, and again, Turkey Hill, um, ongoing heating issues with the univents and actuators. Now, that's an older school, all, all those, um, those are all controlled by pneumatic valves. And, uh, right now, we have, um, what controls on those pneumatic valves is a, an air compressor. And right now, we have a dual air compressor motor, and one of those motors is down. So I'm in the process of, um, getting service done on that. And if we lose that compressor, then we lose, we lose the heat distribution. So that's, that's a big deal. The high school, I'm sorry, the, uh, Turkey Hill, we also have the emergency nine-one-one compliance upgrade that needs to happen. That needs to happen at each, each one of the schools.
Mr. Heavy, just a quick question on the, the compressors that you just referred to. You have a system where these pneumatic valves are run by, uh, air compressors, and you have two air compressors, w, one of the two air compressors is down.
I have, I have one compressor that has dual motors.
One compressor that has dual motors.
So if, and right now, one of those motors is down.
Okay. So.
So if we lose the other one.
Compressor itself is a single point of failure, but you have a backup, you have two motors essentially?
That's the backup.
Okay, okay.
We're running off backup right now.
Okay, and is that motor showing any sign of stress, or, or, I mean, obviously, it's a single point of failure, but?
It's, the compressor itself is not that old. If I remember correctly, there was, I don't know the year that it was purchased, but it's, it's not as old as the builder, so, um.
Are these motors readily replaceable?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Um, going to the high school, uh, we had issues with the dishwasher going down there as well. Uh, we ended up having a, uh, pinhole leak in the booster tank. Where, when you run the, the dishwasher, it was spraying water out of the bottom, and it was getting all over the electrical portion underneath, so we had to shut it down and, uh, replace the tank on that. So that's been fixed and is up and running. And there was a cost involved that, with that, and that was about six thousand dollars to, to fix. Next item is the stadium lift on the athletic field and the high school elevator, inside the building. When I first got here, um, those elevators were down. And we needed to get them fixed. We, we've paid significant amount of money to get those repaired. Um, especially the high school elevator. We have since fixed the stadium lift.
Can you orient me to where the stadium lift is?
The two football fields out in front of the, out on Massachusetts Ave.
Front field, not the turf, okay, got it, nope, I know exactly what you mean.
There's a, there's a wheelchair lift.
Yep, okay.
On the stadium.
Yep.
On, on the, uh, grandstand, yeah. That has been fixed, and I'm waiting for inspection by the state. We have, uh, fire panel issues at the high school, where there is alarms that come in over the fire panel, and they constantly go off. And I, we've cut it down significantly, uh, by replacing some parts, um, on some of the control boards. But the problem still exists, and the problem is somewhere out in the building. There's, I believe that it has something to do with water coming in and not, and, and interrupting the connection on one of the lines. So it could be, uh, you've got a strobe, a fire strobe on the, um, on the wall. It could be as simple as not a very good connection, a loose connection with one of those strobes, but you have no idea which strobe it is. It'll send a signal back to the panel, but it doesn't say, you know, "Strobe down in, uh, by the library." It's like looking for a needle in a haystack. So, we've made some progress on it, but it's still an issue that we have to address. Again, the high school elevator, um, that was down. We had to replace the pump motor and the starter on that. And that was a significant amount of money, that was, you know, almost fifteen thousand dollars to replace. We got that fixed, and we came in, did the inspection, and then during the inspection, they discovered that there was a hydraulic leak, leaking from the gasket inside the elevator. So now I'm in the process of trying to get a quote to fix that. And the quote that I got was pretty significant, so I'm looking for, uh, another vendor to get me a second quote on that, to just make sure that it's in line with the repair. As of right now, that elevator is still down. And at one point in time, we had all three elevators down, because the middle school elevator went down. They had a control panel that fell off inside above the elevator, and luckily, it was just hanging enough where it didn't cause any damage. It was a control panel that, the usage wiggled it off and, um, created problems. Again, the, we have heating units, um, univents and controllers, that we have problems with, and, um, we'll be looking into, to more of that. And then we also have the emergency nine-one-one, uh, telephone upgrade, um, as well. So again, that's just a, uh, keep it on the radar, that's why I put it on the report. It's something we have to address. And at the bottom, I have a little note that, um, I'm also in the process of, uh, going through an energy audit. I'll be meeting with Unitel and ACOM tomorrow morning. And we're going to start looking at, um, seeing where we can make impro, improvements to try to save some energy, and see if there's any other projects that may surface out of this analysis that we're going to do.
Just a quick question on the, um, I have a couple of questions, uh, still on the sheet. I, I believe in the budget that we went through last week, the, the expense lines, there was a plan to put in some sort of maintenance or service plan on these elevators? Is that, is my, is my recollection correct?
I am looking to implement a service contract.
Okay.
For, for general maintenance, uh, as of right now, we don't have one.
Okay, so would that, that's not like a warranty that would cover future high-dollar repairs?
Small item stuff, it, it covers.
But not a fifteen thousand dollar repair, okay. Does a, I travel on business frequently, I'm frequently in elevators and tall buildings, and there's always a certificate of inspection in the elevator that has to be certified. In most cities, it's every two years, I believe. Do we have to abide by that sort of regular inspection in our schools, I would assume? And have we managed to recertify despite the apparent lack of maintenance that's happened there?
That has been one of the challenges, uh, in the past, is by not having a service contract, it falls on the school district to manage that. And that's one thing that, in my opinion, got slipped through the, slipped through the cracks. By going with a service, uh, contract, the company will manage that. They'll call me when service, uh, when inspection is going to happen. And then I have certain things that I need to do, um, to prepare for that inspection. So that will get covered when we go to a, uh, service level agreement.
On the E-nine-one-one system, can you explain what the phones currently don't do? And what exactly is the compliance requirement? Are we in violation currently? Do we have a certain timeframe that we have to be in compliance, like, that, that sort of thing?
We are out of compliance right now, um, due to this, the, the new law that came out. What it means is, we have to upgrade our phone system so that whoever dials nine-one-one out of the classroom, or whatever location they're in, that location and room number is supposed to display on dispatch side. So that they know, I call the nine-one-one, dispatch picks up, they say, "Okay, I've got an emergency at primary school in room one-oh-five." Right now, our system does not track that.
Okay.
And that's what the upgrade covers.
Was this a state law?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did they give us money to do this?
No.
Of course. Okay, so they just, I mean, I under, I understand why, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
But they gave us no money to do this?
No.
It's a lot of things like that.
This is an unfunded mandate.
We do as an unfunded mandate.
Do we know how our state legislators voted on it? Love to know, because.
I mean, in the grand scheme of things, with or without the funding from the state, this is.
It's a good.
We gotta do it, I mean, you know, but.
It's just yet another, like.
I mean, uh, I, you know, one word, one word, of Aldi, right?
Um, do you know, why is Turkey Hill so much more expensive for the nine-one-one compliance than the other schools?
Um, I believe they have a, an older phone system there. They're not, uh, they're not up to date as the other two schools. So it's a bigger upgrade.
It's probably analog.
And we have, um, are we going to do TCP? Is that?
Yeah, we can do all of them.
I did not put that into the budget.
Okay.
Isn't that Central Office?
It is Central.
Yeah, that is.
That's not in the budget, that.
I did not put that into next year's budget.
Okay, got it.
I think I had mentioned before that we were looking to potentially save money on a bus, move extended day out. Our phones that we purchased a little over a year ago at, uh, Central Office could be moved down to Turkey Hill.
Okay.
So if that's the case, it would just be part and parcel of, of the Turkey Hill.
So the phones that you have would be compatible with that system, but you would, but left to their own devices, you would still need to do an upgrade if you were to leave it at Central Office?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Any questions on, uh, the building update?
The only question I have, um, you've done a lot of schools, this is not your first rodeo. Is this univent control a problem ongoing in all schools, or is, is it a lack of maintenance? It's ongoing?
Yeah.
To be expected.
It's, to, to tell you the truth, the, uh, heating is always an issue in any school. So, it's not uncommon to have problems like this.
Okay.
Uh, all the districts that I've worked with is all, always had problems. Um, you know, rooms too cold, too hot, you know, there's various reasons why that happens. Sometimes it's, you know, the equipment failing, other times it's, you know, people sitting in the classrooms, you know, they're sitting right in front of a window, and, you know, it's cold, so they're getting more of that coldness through the windows. So there's, there's a lot of different reasons why, uh, it's a challenge.
Okay.
But you get a lot of, a lot of people saying, oh, it's cold here, it's, you know, this isn't working. So we go in and we look at it, we research it, and try to come up with a plan to fix it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
Mr. Heevey, this is gonna probably be a dumb question, but I don't know the answer. Is any of the things that are, are any of the things that we've had to repair covered by district insurance policies?
Nothing that I've come across yet. Next item that I wanna review is the district heating issues. So that's just building on top of, you know, what I talked to in the building update. But it's giving you a little bit more specific stuff. So for the primary school, when I first got in here, I do a walk of the buildings, did a walk through the boiler rooms to see how things were working. And I came across right off that we had one large circulation pump that was above one of the boilers was not working at all. It was seized up. So I had to take that out and get it rebuilt and repaired, and that was about a four thousand dollar cost. We had some actuators at primary that we identified that we're having problems with, that we needed to replace, and that was about seventeen hundred dollars. As you look through the list that I have here, you're gonna see that the costs are And that is what the industry is right now. Everything is very expensive. And you're seeing, seeing the dollars. And that's why I put it on there, so that you guys will be aware of the stuff that I will be dealing with. And this is just the tip of the iceberg as far as really getting into the buildings and digging in and looking at problems. So my goal is to provide updates like this and keep you abreast of these issues the best I can. Looking at some of the heating issues that we had at primary, I came across, I found three defective controller thermostat sensors. To replace those, those were about six, six thousand dollars. Okay? There's a quote there to replace what they call a JACE controller. And those controllers are, think, think of it as like a rotary. So you're driving down the road, and you come to a rotary, and then you have different options to go out. Well, that controller is very similar to that. You get communications that go out to that controller, and then you have all these univents, actuators, air handling units, air conditioning units, all tied into this one controller. And if that controller starts to go bad, it affects everything else. So we've identified one controller so far at primary that needs to be replaced. And that is about a ten thousand dollar replacement.
How many of these controllers are at the primary? Is it a one?
Many. It could, yeah. There's, it could be, it could be up to ten controllers for the school.
They're not all bad.
Nope.
Oh, no, I just wanted to know.
Nope.
No, but if they're the same, and they have the same-
They have a certain lifespan.
Yeah, right?
Yeah. And there's various reasons. It could be, you know, we, this area takes a lot of power loss, you know, from storms, and we lose power. You lose power in a building like that, it can affect those controllers. It can lose settings. It could damage the control board inside. There's a lot of different parts in there. It's electronics that can be affected. So I've had the service technicians in already to troubleshoot some of the problems, and this is one of them that we've identified. The other thing I wanna point out that I don't have down here is, we have what they call building management systems in place, which is a computer with all the controls, and it tells me how each univent is working, and how much, you know, what the temperature is in the room, and if there's any problems with any devices. I logged into this application. This was probably the first week or two that I was here. And the application looked like a Christmas tree. It was blinking, it had red, green, orange stuff that was just displaying all sorts of problems. So that's stuff that I've gotta get into and troubleshoot and figure out why that's happening. But it takes time.
Sure. Is it still blinking?
Yes.
Like a Christmas tree?
Not as bad, but it's, it's still an issue. It's concerned. And it's, it's something district-wide that I have to look at. I have to go to each school and, and review all that. But that's gonna take time. As you see here, I've got a quote here for a service tech to come in that deals specifically with these controllers. You know, to have two techs come out for an eight-hour shift, it's, you know, it's about thirty-two hundred dollars for the day. So they're, they're worth it to help me get to a baseline, to make sure that everything's working right, and, you know, then once, once I get through everything, then I don't need them as much. Everything settles down. Turkey Hill, we had boiler number two. We had a pressure relief valve fail on that during inspection, so I had to replace that. And that was about a thirteen hundred dollar cost. We had domestic hot water not reaching its temperature. We found there was, there was a small circulation pump that had a crack that we had to replace. So that was six hundred dollars. And then there's a, the dual air compressor, we have one of the motors seized up, and I'm in the process of getting that serviced. At the high school, I cannot believe the amount of issues we have. Just alone, this, I've got seven units on the roof that are either down or have problems. And I have service scheduled for next week, and that's a significant cost. Yes.
If they're all on the roof, is there something about the design of the building or the weather pattern that makes these particularly susceptible to damage, decay, or disrepair?
What I'll say is, these have been some issues that have been out there for a little bit. And I started, I was the lucky guy to-
Okay.
Come across-
So it's not that they all happened at the same time, it's just they all built up?
Yeah.
Got it.
The other thing that may be playing a role, you might remember that we had some challenges with the cooling back in September when we had that series of warm days.
Oh, yeah.
And we had multiple vendors in, working on different facets of it, and they suspect that, based on what they were looking at, the damage they were looking at, that the building had taken a lightning strike. So I don't know if potentially that played any role in, in these units not functioning properly. Perhaps it did, maybe it didn't. But that, where this is impacting the heating now, obviously, they weren't looking at that in September.
Is the heating in that building functioning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, you know, certain areas are cooler than others. And then again, you notice at the bottom of the page, I've got two more controllers that need to be replaced. And I did put those into my next year's budget to have replaced. But you can see just some of the stuff that, what I'm dealing with and the costs involved with, with the fixes. Any questions on, on that?
I have a dumb question. Why was Turkey Hill so cheap compared to the other two?
What do you mean?
I mean, Turkey Hill's our oldest building, and historically, we've had a lot of issues.
I haven't gotten to that school yet.
Oh, great. It's just, it's only-
There are issues over there.
Okay.
But I'm only one person, three schools.
Yep.
Lot of units. And, you know, there's only so much that my maintenance people can do too.
Oh, no, I just was curious because-
It's, it's gonna take some time to get through this, to get to a baseline where everything is stable.
What's your time, timeline for a baseline where everything is stable? What are you thinking, roughly? I'm not asking for a promise.
I don't, I don't, 'cause I don't know what I'm getting into yet.
Okay.
You know, I mean, the season is, the winter season is coming to an end, so-
You haven't been here in the winter. When did you, what day did, when did you start? It was-
November.
October 23rd.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
So-
Very happy day.
And my other question is, so there's prices on this. Some of these, we've already spent the money in this year's budget.
Yes.
And some we're asking to spend for next year?
Anywhere you see the word quote-
Quote.
-is stuff that I put in for next year's budget. Or if there is money towards the end of the year, if there's something that we can do, we'll have that conversation. But as of right now, that, that stuff is in my next year's budget. And then my final report will be the capital improvement projects. I am working with the consultants on the documentation that needs to be updated to get these projects out to bid. And I have received one of them. And as you see, as you go through this, you'll see, you'll see my updates on it. But to start off with the school truck with the plow, I have been working with McGovern and J.C. Madigan on the status of our truck. It's my understanding that the truck is right now over at J.C. Madigan's, being put together. The estimated time is, is somewhere around March 15th. After they are done with it, then they will send it back over to McGovern, and then they will have a few finishing touches to do on the vehicle, and then they will release that to us. So it's good news. We've had to jump through some hoops with that, but it's on, it's on its way. So that's, that's good.
This is the truck that was approved as part of the FY23 capital plan?
Speedy.
Very speedy.
The middle high school turf field feasibility study, what they call feasibility study, and this is a drainage project. I put that out and held interviews with contractors, and we received some written quotes back. And the person that I'd like to award the, the contract to is a company, a civil engineering company called Collins. So what I need to do is go through the process of getting them approved and send them out an award letter, and then go through the process of putting in a requisition for that amount. Which their, their cost came in at forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, and it was budgeted for fifty thousand dollars through the opera funds. So that is in play. In my schedule for that, as soon as I get that paperwork done, get the purchase order and everything, we'll start scheduling the, the work. And then my hope is to have it done by the end of July of this year. So then we'll have documentation on how to fix the drainage, what the real problems are there, with an estimated cost to fix some of those problems. And that'll be good data that we can bring back for phase two, for the, the total turf field upgrade.
Mr. Heevey, I cannot emphasize enough the importance of making this timeline.
Yeah.
The, that turf field, I, I think, best-case scenario has three years left on it, probably more realistically, two. We're gonna have to have serious conversations next year about replacement of that turf and renewal of the financing and all those things that would come along with that.
Yeah.
And you're obviously well aware of the financial predicament we're in. We really need to understand how the turf and the wear and tear with that turf, and how that interrelates with the broader drainage issues that we're having in that facility.
Yeah.
Not to mention, I mean, anybody who's, you know, of reasonable intelligence knows that that wall is gonna go over sooner or later-
Yeah.
-and has got to be replaced. And-
Now, keep in mind that this is gonna just identify the problems and how to fix it and give us some cost.
Well, that's exactly my point, which is, this is incredibly important-
It's not gonna fix it.
This is incredibly important information for us to then react to, strategize in terms of how we are going to finance whatever it is we're going to do.
Yeah.
And, and we are going to need reaction time. Our capital planning submission is typically in, in the month of October. And we can, we cannot afford to get this report in September or October.
Yeah.
It really needs to come in by the end of July.
All right. And then, next item I have is the Turkey Hill exterior door upgrades and replacements. That- That is the one that I just got back from our consultants. And now, what I need to do is go in and update that document with the actual scope of what needs to be done, and then we can get that out to bid. So, my hope is to have that done by the end of this month, and get that posted and out on the, out to bid. And then, the other ones, the Turkey Hill security upgrades, the fire alarm upgrades, again, that's, I'm still waiting on documentation. And then, again, once I get that, I will update the scopes in the documents and then get those ready to be posted and get them out, out to bid. I have the primary school AC mini splits.
Can we just pause on Turkey Hill for a moment? I had heard, and I honestly don't recall where I got this bit of information, that there were concerns about the vestibule at Turkey Hill and some sort of discussion with a building inspector and having to do additional architectural work associated with that project. I don't see that outlined here, so did I miss here, or can you, can you explain what's going on?
No, that is part of the scope. Because we're adding to the building, because that's considered an addition.
Sure.
Exterior addition, we have to have it certified by an architect. So, that is part of the scope, that we have an architect come in and design it up, certify it, and they'll also be part of putting in the doors as well.
Do you know if that was factored into the estimate that was put together for these vestibules?
Um...
Or vestibule, singular?
I think it was looked at, but I don't know if the, I wanna say yes, it was, because I saw some quotes, or some paperwork in regards to the vestibule, but...
Okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't from an architect, it was from a vendor, so...
But it accounted for the need for an architect?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. I just was sensitive to, number one, the amount of time that this is taking, and number two, the potential that it could go over budget and then create additional downstream issues.
And I'm keeping the superintendent up to date on, on, you know, when I get numbers, I'm in her office and talking with her and giving her updates.
I hear she's really good with numbers, so...
And then, the primary school air conditioning mini splits. I'm working with Deacon, who's our vendor for, for our heating units, and working with them, and I'm getting an updated quote on that, because the quote that was provided has expired, and we're getting an updated one to see where we are on that project. So, I will keep Dr. Burnham up to speed on, you know, where we are with those numbers. So, I should, I should see that information relatively soon, I'm hoping within the next week. But again, as soon as I get it, I will let the superintendent know. Any questions?
Questions? Mr. Leighton, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Heavee, you've been extremely thorough in what you've done, and we greatly appreciate it. It's clear that you have a good handle on what you need to do, and you're going about doing it, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, it's nice to hear. I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
No, thank you very much for this presentation. I've obviously been anticipating this for quite some time. The superintendent and the chair will attest to that.
Yes. I've made Mr. Heavee aware.
You know, as I've said, and I've repeated publicly over the last couple of weeks, the school committee has superintendency over our facilities and grounds. We're ultimately responsible for your success. And I think that it's important that we have a regular dialogue about what these things are, and as much foresight as possible in terms of what will be needed, so that we can strategize to get the resources that need to be gotten to do these sorts of things. And I appreciate the creative thinking that has been employed over the course of the last several weeks, to look at the mixture of contracted services and our own personnel despite the inaccurate description that was made by the chair of the selectmen last night in terms of how we're approaching maintenance of our facilities. I think we're doing a pretty good job. Not to say we've been doing a pretty good job. I, I think this has been an area that has needed improvement for quite some time, and I think that you're a change agent that is beginning to bring that improvement. Obviously, there's a long list of things to do that you just went through. And, and I in particular, as our representative to the capital planning committee, am sensitive to the fact that as we bring more capital requests forward, and I see plenty of opportunities here, the obvious question is, is what have you done with the money we already gave you? And, and some of these things are getting a little long in the tooth, so...
Yeah, well, once these projects get caught up, you know, as things come out, we'll be able to get on it a lot faster. But until we can kinda catch up on those, you know, it'll be a challenge.
Yep, understood.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I wanted to say, I appreciate the thoroughness of the information as far as the prices and what's been done and the estimates. I really appreciate the thoroughness of this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This was very helpful information, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the docket, we have our FY '25 budget update. We are in a bit of a flux as to what budget to talk about, as Dr. Burnham has prepared a multitude of budgets.
Can you remind us again why we have so many budgets? Because I heard a lot of complaints last night about the number of budgets by the people who asked for that many budgets.
Ask for the budgets.
So, can we explain again why we have four budgets for anyone who seems to be...
There are more now.
There are more now, yes, there's extras.
Oh, boy. So, why do we have so many?
Well, one would have come forward from me. It also coincided with a request for a needs-based budget. So, the needs-based budget and what I would have brought forward for the committee's consideration as my recommendation are one in the same. The initial budget that I submitted to the town manager was to meet the 2.5 target. I was also asked to provide a level service budget. That request, as well as the needs-based budget request, came from the finance committee. The town manager then asked me for a budget that was ESER-only cuts. I'm trying to think of how many. Then, then she included a 2.94% increase for the school department in her budget that she presented. So, then we set out to develop a budget that would meet that, and the chair had advised me 3%. So, I had shared with you and the community a 3.02 budget. I have since worked on that 3.02 budget, because we have been advised that the budget that I present to the finance committee has to be the budget that is part of the balanced budget that the town manager is putting forth. So, the 2.94 budget, I will have to present. So, I went back to the drawing board to get the 3.02 down to 2.94, and essentially, I removed funds from the line that we had put the funds in for the, the network upgrades for, for security.
Okay.
And removing funds from that line got me to the 2.94.
Okay.
I'm really uneasy about removing those funds from the budget, but we have other avenues. We're pursuing to try to get some of those funds, including our computer consultant is pursuing a cyber grant that will not fund the, all of the projects. They are not all eligible, but the, the project that is approximately $21,000, that would be one that might be eligible. So, she is pursuing grant funding for that portion of what we need to do. And then, last evening, we heard that there's a possibility that there may be additional funds coming our way, and in round figures, those additional funds that were shared last night, I think will put us about a 4% budget, maybe just a little bit under a 4% budget. So, I, I have, I have information on that for you this evening. Initially, I did not spend time with my team diving into what the actual ESER cuts would be for the ESER budget. We took the salaries that had been paid out of ESER and subtracted it from the bottom line. However, if that is a budget that is being considered for an override, you need to have more specificity about that. So, I worked with my team again to identify cuts that we would make to offset the loss of the ESER funds. I want to be clear about this, and I've said this for three years. The ESER-funded positions were not necessarily guaranteed to be the ones that would be ultimately cut. We would make the cuts based on the loss of that revenue. So, that's why I worked with the team to determine, are the currently ESER-funded positions positions that we want to cut, that we would prioritize in the big picture, that these would be the positions we would cut? If they aren't, what position would we cut in its place? So, I, I have those thoughts for you this evening as well. I've made adjustments to the budget sheets, assuming that you don't have any thoughts about changing any of the recommended cuts for the ESER budget. I will then replace the ESER budget in the rainbow spreadsheet with the actual cut ESER And I will have budget sheets ready to go, should we confirm that we are actually going to receive additional funding and in what amount. I will finalize those budget sheets, and I will pick another color and add that to the rainbow as well.
We're running out of colors. Okay.
But I haven't picked gray, so that's good.
So, in proceeding this evening, because we do have our Q and A, but I would think that you should give us whatever updated information you have this evening.
Alrighty, I will...
Have folks ask questions that you may answer in your presentation.
And what was it, the town manager mentioned, an extra $230,000, but that...
But it may not actually be that.
But it may not actually end up being that number.
I very, I, I sent an email this morning to confirm, and it's too soon to confirm.
Okay.
There's, there's a couple of things in the air. She has to wait for the free cash to be, not free cash, for the new growth to be certified, and she's waiting for that return. And then, there is a warrant article by the Board of Assessors that has to do with seniors paying lesser debt formula. So, she's waiting for that.
Okay.
All right, so I'm just gonna recap quickly. This is an amended slide deck, same as last week. Again, the level service budget, that information is still the same. The level service budget with ESER cuts, this is what I presented a week ago. You can see that the percentage increase was an 8.73. However, when we went in and actually removed employees, specific employees and their salaries from our, from our budget documents that are all linked and have formulas embedded, when we remove an employee from that sheet, it actually changes the salary reserve. It's one less individual in the bargaining group, so it reduces the salary reserve that's been set aside for the amount of staff that we have currently. So, when we did that, again, this is salaries coupled with reduced salary reserve for the bargaining, the contract bargaining that we're, we're engaging in this year. The percent is actually down to a six.
This is 6.04% from current year.
Mm-hmm.
So, you would subtract the 2.94 that is currently proposed from the 6.04, and you would see a delta of 3 point...
Right. It would be the delta between what the town manager has committed to with the 2.9 to this.
Right, okay.
Yep.
And that number is 24, 265, 882. That's level services minus ESER.
Right. So, originally, I shared early on in this process that we had eight professionally licensed staff being paid with ESER this year. We also had four tutors being paid with ESER funds this year. So, to, to make cuts in an equal number, you'll see nine licensed educators here. We added one to offset the tutor portion of the grant.
Who did you add?
So, this would be the high school intervention teacher. That's where we will be merging those two programs that support a small number of students. The fifth grade, extra fifth grade classroom teacher at Turkey Hill. There's a, a classroom teacher at the middle school. A history teacher at the high school. The instructional coach. The PE teacher cut at the K-5 level. The Wilson reading teacher. The second social worker at the primary school. And a middle school guidance position. Again, I worked with the principals on, on these cuts, trying to prioritize from the big list of cuts that we've already shared many, many times in many configurations, depending on the budget, which they would prefer to keep. And, and these were on the list that they would, would be okay if, if they were cut. And these were on the list that they would be okay if they were cut. Town manager's 2.97 budget.
It's 2.94.
2.94.
No, 2...I will correct that. I corrected it on this slide, just not on the cover.
Okay. But the dollar value is correct?
Yep.
That matches the 2.94?
Yep. So essentially, I took the 3.02, and I deducted the $24,204 from the computer lease and maintenance line. Again, that takes our network upgrades for security off the table. No changes here, same as last week. The needs-based budget that I presented at the 5.42, again, no changes here. This slide, you might recall, just does on a single sheet, the comparison of the cuts between the needs-based budget versus the town manager's 2.9 budget.
Version seven.
I didn't know what to call it at this point.
We're into Microsoft numbering here, so yeah, we're good. We're good.
Maybe it should have been a 7.0.
Called it XP.
Again, thinking that it will fall somewhere in around a 4% if the figure that was shared last evening comes in close to that in actual terms. So with the modified town budget, 4.0%, we're looking at three classroom teachers at the high school. We're still making the guidance cuts at the middle high school. We're looking at a classroom teacher at the middle school. The intervention teacher at the high school. Three paraprofessionals at the high school. The assistant principal at the middle high school. And the reduction of the high school music teaching position. Still, we would lose the part-time secretary for the athletics department. Turkey Hill and Primary, we're still losing that PE teacher. Turkey Hill would still lose their extra fifth grade classroom. Primary would lose their extra second grade classroom. We would still be looking at the music teacher reductions at Turkey Hill. The Wilson reading teacher. The special ed teacher, where we would be merging the achieve class with the TLC program. We would be losing that second social worker at the primary school. We would lose two paraprofessionals from the primary school. We'll still lose the instructional coach, a maintenance position. A part-time custodian, that would be the part-time custodian at TCP. And we are still minus the Title I coordinator function in a separate position.
Does this budget include the expense line increases that you had encompassed into your needs-based budget last week?
I would have to put them up side by side, but they wouldn't be...
Okay, I don't have the benefit of a side-by-side comparison here, so yeah.
Right. And neither do I at this point.
Okay. Fair.
I would...my recollection is, we didn't really make many changes to the expense lines.
Okay. So suffice to say, if we had to, let's say, in a...let's explore a scenario for a moment here, that last night's almost-real grant of $230,000 were real. And we'll just suspend disbelief of the craziness that's occurred in the last 36 hours. And we had 4%. The challenge that I see here is that you have been asked to go to the Finance Committee next week and propose a 2 point...explain what a 2.94 looks like. We don't know if it's a 2.94, or a 3.96, or a 3.75, or a 4. We have no idea.
Correct.
So you are now in the situation where are you intending to go to the Finance Committee and present your 2.93? Or are you going to propose something that the school committee has not extensively deliberated because it's a magical number that's going to be generated in the next seven days?
Do we meet again before...
Oh, hopefully.
Oh. It's my plan at this moment, to be going forward with the 2.9 budget.
It was somewhat a rhetorical question, because I knew the answer. But I think that, for the public's benefit, this is a really good illustration of the absolute craziness that we are dealing with right now. And what was illustrated falsely on this stage last night is a completely different narrative, where the school committee has brought forth multiple budgets, can't make a decision, and the town doesn't know what to do. The reality of the situation is, at no time has the school committee ever committed to voting on a budget before the 20th of March. That is our scheduled public hearing, the schedule that we've had for discussing all of these budgets. Everything that we're doing has been devised to land on a budget recommendation on the 20th of March. Our job is to advise the town manager in advance of that what we're thinking so that she can come up with a budget that she can recommend, that has a total number for the school department, that we then can zero in on an agreeable number and what is included in that budget. That has not been the way that this budget season has gone. There's no indication that the needs of the school department were included in the town manager's 2.94% budget. There's no indication that she took any direction from anybody but one member of the Board of Selectmen in that deliberation. And here we are, multiple weeks later, and we are as lost as we've ever been in terms of what we're going to bring forth and when. So I'm extremely saddened and frustrated by the situation. My recommendation is exactly what you just described, is you go forth next week with a 2.93. We have to have a discussion later tonight about a number to zero in on an override number. That number should be based on that 2.93. We will hold a public hearing on the 20th. There will be another Finance Committee meeting with a public hearing on the 21st, and we can potentially zero in on a better number around that time. You're shaking your head, Evan. Is that timing not correct?
14 through the 28th.
14 through the 20th. Okay. So we have more time, you know, to get to the 28th. Of course, the big problem is, is that the issue around the override and the number associated with the override further complicates the matter. We have been put into a situation by the powers that be in the town of Lunenburg that really there's no way to navigate out of right now and do right by the kids.
Right.
Well, I think what we've been told is, take the money and stop complaining and make do with the very little we have, which is not...
With terribly incorrect and mischaracterized information is part of that.
Not going to work.
Tony?
I think that we have gotten, like, in our heads, we have engaged in analysis paralysis because we've been asked to do too many things and serve too many masters. I think, Dr. Burnham, you should pick a budget, you should recommend a budget for us to talk about tonight so that we can say, this is the one we're approved. Then we pick another one for override and just move on. Like, if they keep asking us, all we do is get back on the treadmill. And we can stay on a treadmill four hours every Wednesday for eternity. Let's just make decisions. We were here last week. We didn't make a decision. It is time to just make decisions. Because we're not going to get clarity. Like, we're holding out hope that they're going to provide us better numbers. That's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. It has not happened. They have not done that. And like, if we worry about what another board says about us, like, I just don't care. Like, they can say whatever they want. The facts are the facts. Anybody who wants to look at them can come and see them. But we just need to pick. Like, forget waiting. We are done. If we don't pick tonight, it's over. We're going to mess this up for ourselves. We need to pick tonight. We need to take a vote. We need to pick. We do not need any more information. It is not coming.
So I agree with what...yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. I would partially agree with Anthony. I think we should have discussions tonight. I don't think we need a vote. I also think that it shouldn't come from the superintendent. I think we should really go around the room, discuss which budget we want to hear from the superintendent. I want to hear about the 3% budget, and I also want to hear about the funding without the ESER. Those budgets, I think, are the most important that the citizens need to hear about, too. And that also, the money without the ESER, the budget without the ESER funding, I think, is really important for the override.
Yeah. My thought, Brian, and I agree with you, is that we know, and we've discussed this with the Chair of FinCom, that they have to hear what is going to be in the budget that the town manager recommended, because that's going to be in her omnibus budget that she puts forward. So that's the budget that needs to go to FinCom next week. We don't have to agree with that budget. To me, that is the discussion we have on the 20th. We can't talk about it tonight, but that is the discussion we have on the 20th and the vote we hold for the 20th, when we have our public hearing. Tonight, we have to decide on the override amount. If we don't decide on it tonight, then we don't have it for the Select Board on Tuesday night. And that is a problem. Because this schedule has no breathing room. So if we tonight, we can talk about the 4% or we can talk about the 3%, and if we have that slide deck, we can look at that in preparation for next week. But we can't do anything with that, because we don't know if that money is coming or not. So to me, the discussion tonight is about the override amount. But before we go to vote for that, we have a budget update question and answer that we have to do as well. But as far as voting on something that isn't an override amount, I don't think we should do that tonight. But I definitely think, I don't even think, I know, we have to do the override vote tonight.
Okay.
So the budget process is, the town manager says how much money we're going to get?
Yep.
And then we have to present that amount? And there's...
We have to illustrate what that number looks like.
Okay.
That's not the budget that we have to...
That doesn't mean that's what we want.
Okay.
That just means that that is what...because beyond everything, as one of the things I did agree with with the Select Board last night, beyond everything, we have to have a balanced budget. Evan?
You want me to talk it over?
You sure can.
Oh, yeah.
Evan Waters, Chair of the Finance Committee. Hi.
Hi.
So yes, I spoke with the Chair and Dr. Burnham, and recommended or requested that they do the 2.94% budget strictly because that's what's coming from the town manager. That's what we need to see as the Finance Committee. It doesn't matter what you guys support for that, because that's what has to come towards us initially. That's what we have to look at. That's what we're charged with looking at. Beyond that, whatever budgets you guys support is completely irrelevant from the preliminary budget that's coming to the Finance Committee. So they are separate budgets entirely. Or they can be, they don't have to be. But as far as what has to come to us, needs to be mirroring whatever the town manager is going to put forward on April 4th, or May 4th.
So if I'm hearing you right, it doesn't matter what we want, we just submit to you the 2.94. So we don't have to decide or vote on that. When we do it on the 20th, we're talking about something different.
Correct. You guys have already said and voted that you don't support the 2.94. So that's moot.
Okay. But like, that just takes that issue off the table.
Correct.
And then the only thing we have to decide tonight is what we want the override amount to be. And that has nothing to do with...
Nothing to do with us at this point.
All right. So... To be clear, they will sooner or later want to weigh in on that. It's a fiscal issue. The other thing that I just wanted to zero in on so that everybody kind of understands the process is, if on the 20th, we come up with a number that is not the number that the town manager has agreed to, and I'm not going to say the 2.93, because it could be a different number.
Could be a different number.
Given everything that we've just illustrated. We say that it should be 6.5% or whatever that number might be, right? What happens next? We just go to town meeting and we say, we want this number? Or do we bring an article? Or...
When does the democratic process come in? Because right now, we have an unelected town person handing down things, and the Finance Committee just hears what they say.
Also unelected, by the way.
Yeah. No offense.
No, I'm happy to not be elected today.
We're elected, the Select Board's elected. You guys are appointed. Town manager is appointed in a paid position. When does the democratic process come into it?
To my understanding, for sure, on town meeting floor. Option one, you don't have to pass a balanced budget. She has to present a balanced budget, but you don't have to pass a balanced budget. And that can be amended or shot down, or there's all sorts of ways to mess that up. And that gets terrible on town meeting floor. That is probably the worst way to do it. I don't know if you can submit an article to change the budget or to request a different budget for a specific department. I don't know if that's doable.
So is there a democratic process at all?
On town, just town meeting floor.
But that's not, I mean, that's not the financially responsible way to do it.
Yeah. I mean, that's why we're doing the work here.
Exactly. So what happens then? So Finance Committee, you guys voted to not support the town manager's budget. It comes to the Select Board, it comes to the Finance Committee. We take a look at it. We look at the whole thing, we make recommendations. We can recommend to her, hey, this is not looking good. We need to change. I recommend you change this. We have no authority over her. The Select Board can do the same thing. And then we all vote individually to say whether or not we support the budget as a total package. And then that gets reported on town meeting floor, and then there's a debate that goes on, and the democratic process takes place at that moment.
So what happens if no one votes to support the town manager's budget?
On town meeting floor?
Yeah.
We leave without a balanced budget, and we start scheduling special town meetings.
And then you've got to go back. Brian, did you have something you wanted to ask?
Yes. I feel like...
I'll go on.
For you. My concern would be, I think a lot of people are worried about the dollar amount for the override. Would it make more sense that we would recommend a potential budget with, say, 6%, 7% or a dollar amount? And then the Select Board would then figure out what the dollar amount would be for their override if they want to do?
That's a good idea.
I think we have to come up with the number. I'm going to be honest.
I'm not subjugating any authority to the Board of Select.
Yeah. I think we are best off to come up with the number ourselves.
Well, I think the challenge, what I'm saying...
Well, our school side number. If they have concerns on the town side that they want to add, and I would encourage them to do so, you know, obviously, that's not something we can do. But we decide which, where do we fall? Which of this array of budgets is the one that we think should be submitted for an override? And then, obviously, what happens is the ballot question has to be printed on March 19th. So I think the number has to be solid for March 19th. For the warrant, they have a little bit more give, but you need the ballot number. So it's got to be done quickly. So this $230,000, I don't know how we deal with that, but that's not really our problem tonight. Our problem tonight is to figure out which budget we feel is appropriate for the override.
I'd just like to offer another scenario, just so that people...and I understand that this is complex.
No.
We are likely to put forth a number tonight for an override.
Right.
That number will largely be based on the 2.93, because that's the only number that we have to go on.
Right.
That becomes the number. It goes to town meeting. It can't be changed. It goes to the ballot. In the interim, we come to an agreement on a number that's greater than 2.93, right? And then, the override passes, and now we are funded above what we asked for. The process would be, there would be a special town meeting to level that money and reappropriate the original town meeting budget. Is that a fair description?
To my understanding, I've asked that question as well, as to what happens if... Can you amend a ballot question number on town meeting floor for an override? I don't think you can. You can lessen it, but you can likely lessen it. But yes, that was another question that I've had, that I have not had answered yet either.
Okay.
As far as the override number goes, I know last meeting, you guys were looking at very specific numbers. I encourage you to look at the DLS website and look at all of the overrides and underrides that have taken place. The ones that are 6 and 7 figures have a lot of zeros before the decimal point. They're very round numbers, 1 million, 1.5 million, 2 million. It's not $1,236,374.10. It's not that specific, because it can't be.
Well...
So...
It might be a different expectation. While you're up here, Evan, Carol, do you mind if I just ask one more sort of related question?
Go ahead.
When we talked about override scenarios last week, my objection and the reason why we didn't vote on an override scenario was my concern that there really wasn't the calculus yet to be able to determine a certain dollar value would have an effect on property taxes. Last night, an absurd $1.2 million number was getting thrown around as if it had been proposed by somebody. But there was a dollar value to the average household associated with that, which I think was $260-odd dollars.
$267.99.
$267.99. Okay. So, but the beauty of that is, is if that were true, and I understand it was based on tax year '23.
Correct.
If that were true, you can do a direct proportion calculation, right? So, if we were to say, "Hmm, we want a number that's, you know, $700,000 or something", we could zero in on what that effect would have on an average property?
Yes.
Okay.
DLS's website that gives you that number generator, based on FY '23's taxes, they give you the median household, which I think is 407, or 407... I think it's $470,000. But then, they list from $200,000, every $50,000. I didn't even scroll to the bottom, because there's no point for me. It's very large numbers. And it shows you exactly what the hit would be per household at that point. But again, that's before the reassessment. That's before the reclassification.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, we're dealing with... Very, we're dealing with the numbers we have.
Right. But you can at least infer, I mean, you can say, "I live in a condo, so therefore, I should probably increase this number by 30%."
Right.
"I live in a 101 house that's non-lake front. I can increase mine by 4.4%." And at least get a number, a rough ballpark number.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Waters. Okay, so, once again, we could toss this around forever, but we really don't want to be doing that, so...
Let's do the Q and A. Because we haven't started asking questions yet.
No, we have to do that. So, what we need to do then is, we do have an understanding that for the finance committees needed is a 2.94 budget. So, that, we at least have that figured out?
Yep.
Yep.
We're all okay on that?
We don't even have a choice, right?
Not really. So, but there you go. Well, there were questions coming in, so we're just going one step at a time. The other budget scenarios, we can look over this week, and we will talk about next week. I certainly don't mind going over some of them now, though I think you have.
Mm-hmm.
And then, we get down to the override number. But before we talk about that, we do have this Q and A. So, I would like to first, are there any questions about budget...
Oh, sorry, on Zoom.
Budgets in general, that, in any of these budgets, that anybody on the Board wants to ask, and then I will turn it over to the public.
I have a, just a question in terms of your... I'm still struggling with, okay, what is the right path to take if we were to go down all seven versions of the budget at this point? And where I'm particularly troubled is the needs budget versus the level services minus ESER budget. Because I fundamentally don't believe that we should be going for a full level services budget. I just don't think that that's a responsible ask right now.
Right.
But I do think that there's, that there's a very good case to make. In fact, I would be leaning in the direction, as I've said on multiple meetings now, of level services minus ESER. We have proven that we are on a good track. We put our ESER money to use, knowing that it would expire. And this gives us our best chance of success, if we took that approach. The needs budget that you proposed last week is a lesser number. It's based on need. I'm just wondering if you could help me to classify, like... And I understand, like, this, you know, I understand the position differences and that kind of thing. But how do you, how do I square in my head the difference between, you know, what is effectively the level of service that we more or less agreed to where we ought to be at, given knowing that ESER was going to go away, and this quote-unquote "needs" budget? I'm having, I'm just, I'm having difficulty squaring that in my head.
So, how did we get to the needs budget?
I guess, no. What I'm really asking for, yeah, maybe that's part of the answer, but I'm thinking just philosophically, right? Like, how do I describe in my own logic, right? Like, what this gets us in terms of the total educational value in the school district, you know, versus ESER, versus level services minus ESER?
And I would, you know, offer the opportunity to any of my team here to chime in on this process. I think the difference, the best way to describe it, thinking about, you know, historically, the budget process, historically, the percent increase that we receive, that really, anything over 3% is, that's a big ask. So, initially, without pulling the names out of the ESER budget, we were at a higher percentage. And we knew that that's, it's just not feasible at all. Not even in the realm of possibility. So, we looked at positions again, and it was more so based on, "I really don't want, I really don't want to lose that position. If I lose that position, then I can't do this, or we won't be able to provide a comparable level of service to the students that we're providing currently." So, it was more about, "All right, if more cuts have to come, which cuts can we make and still feel like we're doing right in terms of trying to meet the needs of the kids that we have?", right? Like, it might make a little bit more work for someone if we cut this, and things will have to be redistributed, and other people will have to help pick up pieces. But I think, too, we envision the day in our buildings. How will my building look, feel, function if I make this cut? What pivot do I have to make? Or am I totally giving something up if we make this cut? Can we really give that up? Can we really make this cut? But no, this is a cut I really don't want to make, because now we're really getting down to something that is going to hurt. So, I don't know if any members of the team want to comment at all about how we approached thinking about these cuts for any of the many different versions. But I think that, I think that that's a fair way to describe it, that each time we had to drop the percent increase, it was a deep breath, and it's like, "All right, if something else has to go, what can go and not devastate what we're doing?" I mean, and that, those are the words that we were getting to when we were looking at that 2.5 budget that I had to get to the town manager first.
Okay.
It was really deflating, I will say. It was tough.
I appreciate it, and I understand. I'm asking you to describe something that's like, you know, describe what the color blue looks like. I understand.
It's a really organic process, and we look at it in totality. The impact, when you take something away here, it's not just there that's going to have that impact necessarily.
There's tertiary effects.
There's a ripple, right? So, that's why we talk about these things as a team and try to wrestle with which cuts are the next layer.
I have a completely different question for you. The slide that you showed earlier of the level services minus ESER and the number that's in the side-by-side comparison?
So, the side-by-side comparison, the ESER budget in the side-by-side comparison is essentially pretty much the same thing as the level service budget, minus the total dollar value of the salaries that were being paid by ESER. The actual position cuts are not in that rainbow spreadsheet. So, now that we brought those forward tonight, if you would agree with those as the recommended ESER cuts, I will work on swapping out the ESER budget sheets in that multi-version document to reflect the actual cuts, so that you'll see budget lines. You might see salaries at the primary school reduced, right?
I understand.
So, it's really, it's not a fully, completely flushed-out version, because, as I said, we had to get the 2.5 done. And then, almost, I turned that in, and literally, probably less than an hour, it was, "Can I also have? Can I also have?" So, we didn't spend a lot of time figuring out which cuts, the actual cuts would be in the ESER, because we really didn't think it was feasible. So, we just took the bottom line off the total value and called it the ESER budget.
Okay. The question I was actually going to ask, but I appreciate you illustrating that, was that we actually have two different numbers for that budget. And I know that calculus has changed, and I think you might have even mentioned this a little bit earlier tonight. But in the side-by-side comparison, the level services minus ESER is $24,881,328. And your slide earlier, what I wrote down, and I don't have that slide deck...
I have in front of me. It's 24, 26, 58, 82.
Right. There's two different numbers.
Yeah, and she can explain.
Okay, so, that's what I'm trying to get to. Okay.
Yeah. So, that different number is attached to a different percentage. That 24, 265, 882 goes with the 6% ESER budget. And that bottom-line dollar and the percentage is based on the fact that we went into the budget sheets and actually pulled the real people
Okay.
out of the budget sheets, their salary. And every time we pull an individual out, that's one less person in the formula that gets us the salary reserve line. So, every time we pull one out, the salary reserve number also goes down.
Okay, so, suffice to say, there's an edit that needs to be made in the blue column on the side-by-side comparison.
Oh, yeah.
Now that the order has been...
Yeah, yeah. I have to, if, again, if you're amenable to the position cuts that I have brought forward for the ESER budget, I will go home, and I will...
I know you're a whiz with Excel these days.
I'll have a little Red Bull, and I will make sure I don't make any transition errors in carrying those formulas over. But I will swap out the, what is currently in the multi-version spreadsheet. I will put the actual cut version, which is the 6% budget, into that spreadsheet.
Okay. All right. I think I have a much better understanding. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on the committee with specific budget questions? It looks like Brian is fine. Anyone who is here, come on up.
Renee Amke, Six Iris Court. I think this is an easy one. I had a couple of questions earlier today that Mrs. Archibault already answered for me, so, thank you. You mentioned making those ESER cuts specifically, and it adjusted the salary reserve line. Did it also adjust the health insurance line automatically?
So, that's the thing. No, we would have to go manually pull things out. And the thing is, not all of our staff participate in the health insurance. So, that is one thing that we did take a look at when we just looked at the initial look at an ESER budget and what that might be if we just took the bottom line out. And the folks who, primarily, the folks who were the currently-funded ESER positions this year, there really wasn't any health insurance savings to be had there.
Problem is, when you get into bumping, you don't know.
Well, that's the problem. We get into, "Oh, we're cutting this position, but somebody else has more seniority, so now they're bumping somebody else out, so it's a different salary that's going out, actually going out of the budget." So, it's complicated. So...
I imagine one listens to update them every month.
Yeah, and the health insurance enrollments that we're working with currently, those were current for February. So, we update them monthly. People move from a single plan to a family plan, or drop off a plan.
Okay, so, it's fair to say, if you put the actual ESER cut budget in there, the number you had on the slide is probably going to stay the same, because the health insurance number is likely not to have an impact.
It may give it when I get the March numbers. There may be something there in the March numbers.
We're talking less than $10,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a marginal.
Okay. I had a computer question, but now I forget. Oh, to follow up on your answer, some of the, the computer, what was it? Lease line that had like a $200,000 increase, some of that, that includes the Chromebooks for the students as well as what?
Chromebooks for the 6th grade.
The year mark that you had submitted, right?
Yep. When the students come into the 6th grade, they get their new Chromebooks. When they come into the 9th grade, they're issued new Chromebooks. We...
That year mark was like $102,000, roughly.
We need to purchase Chromebooks for replacement of really worn Chromebooks down at Turkey Hill. We need to have updated Chromebooks at Turkey Hill, because they take the MCAS test on their Chromebook. So, we have to have enough devices that are fully functioning and are running on a platform that will support the MCAS test. So, those were in there. Additionally, we have a replacement cycle for staff. And next year will be... And, um, next year will be the replacement for all the staff at the high school. So, that's-
Is that, so that's a bigger chunk then?
So, that's in the budget line. It was not in the earmark. I, I tried to take the earmark to the things that, you know, are critical need for really meeting state requirements and taking the MCAS test.
So, taking the earmark out, which was roughly 102,000, I think the line, if I remember, it was like 264,000? So, the remainder is all for-
So, there's the, the cost for the replacement for staff. There's, um, in that line was also the, um, the security, the security upgrades for the network. That's why that number was so big.
And so, that will now come out? It sounds like that's, is that going?
I don't, I don't know that in every budget we will take it out because if it doesn't pass an article at, at town meeting, again-
You know what I'm thinking.
No, I know what you're thinking. If it doesn't pass, if it does pass, then, then we'll have to figure out-
How we would apply that money.
How to apply that money.
That will be a good problem to have.
That, I mean- Yeah, that's, that would be a $92,000.
It's a potential restored position.
Yeah.
And the other point I, I just want to make is, you know, there is an increase i- in that line. Because for the last several years while we've had Esser funding, when we get down to the sunsetting of Esser 1 and Esser 2, this is the little bundle of money that's remaining in the grant. We have purchased Chromebooks. Not hundreds of them, but the replacement has been assisted with, with budget monies. So, that's why the budget lines prior would have been a lesser value.
Yeah, they're a lot lower.
And, and next year, we're replacing like the largest staff that we have.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
I think also, the, the early Chromebooks that we bought on, um, on Esser were, some of them were 2019 and 2020 model Chromebooks that had a shorter forced obsolescence cycle, which, you know,
Because they were so hard to get your hands on.
Yeah, and then, but they did change it in 2020. I believe it's now 10 years. So, the, the forced obsolescence of Chromebooks is not, is not now what it was a couple of years ago.
Oh, it's good to know.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Menard.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, thank you. Chris Menard, um, Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee. Uh, a question was raised about when the democratic process comes into play. We're kind of living it right now. And, and it was also stated that Finance Committee is an appointed position, but it's kind of a funny appointed position where we're not a subcommittee to anyone. We're appointed by the town moderator, um, the school committee, and the select board. And our real purpose is, is to represent the legislature through hearings. And ultimately, there's three things we can do through that. The first one is we can influence the budget as it's being developed. The second thing is we vote on every moneyed article, whether we would recommend approving it or not. And the third thing we do is we write a report that goes into the warrant. The, the last two things are pretty important because if town manager, who is responsible by charter to pull for the omnibus budget, if we don't agree with it as Finance Committee, we can simply recommend to not approve it as it is. The second thing we could do is if we said, hey, you know, the schools are short $200,000 and we believe these other committees are, are over by, uh, these other departments, sorry, are over by $200,000, we could write that up in our, in our report. And on the floor, we can hold those items and make amendments to the town manager's budgets during the, um, the, um, town meeting. So, that's the democratic process that comes into play. So, yes, when you come forward to the, um, Finance Committee hearing, at least the first time, it has to be based, everything we do needs to be based upon the budget as it stands on that day. But you can come forward and say, this is where we think we're short, based on that budget. We'll have a public hearing. The budget will become more and more firm throughout the entire process. Unknowns will become knowns. And maybe by the end of it, you know, your budget is increased, just like we saw this past week. So, I want everyone to know that it's not that, you know, we have a, you know, a, the town manager is responsible for coming up with the budget for the entire town. Got it? But there are processes in place to, to push back against that budget as it just outlined. And ultimately, it is town, um, it is the town that does that. And there's processes in place to, to, to carry that out properly. So, I just kind of wanted to give hope that it's not, you know, we're stuck with this because one person has said it. That's not the case. But it is difficult, I'm sure, to be town manager as well because she needs to balance all the needs of all the departments as well. So, I hope we can get back to collaboration amongst boards. Um, and I hope we can work through this as a town with Finance Committee helping to, to overlook all interests and ultimately make recommendations towards town meeting. So, that's all I had.
Thank you, Chris.
That was a great explanation, Chris. Thank you for taking the time to do that.
Thank you.
I can't see the names of those people.
Shoshana Muley.
Hi. Shoshana Muley, 139 Cofer. I know that we have been through this a number of times. However, I'm going to make my question as specific as possible. Dr. Verna, why can you not take away the cut for the Turkey Hill fifth-grade band from the budget that would be level services minus Esser?
From the which budget?
The minus Esser.
I don't think that it was on the minus Esser. It was not on the Esser cut budget, I don't believe.
The Turkey Hill middle school music, not the high school.
Right. I don't believe that either of them were on the Esser-only cut budget.
No.
So, if there was an Esser budget, that 6% budget, the music position at the Turkey Hill is not touched. Nor is the position for music at the high school.
Right. Okay, that wasn't clear to anyone other than you.
Okay, so I, that's because the budget sheets are not up on, on the website yet. Um, I honestly have been working on them, uh, all afternoon. I had a meeting this afternoon with the town manager and went right back to throwing together a few numbers for the slides. So, again, as long as the school committee is fine with the positions that I have proposed for the Esser cuts, I will amend the spreadsheet that's posted so that it reflects that. And we will also put the slides up. I literally was finishing the slides seconds before I, I got up here. So, that's why they, they aren't posted.
Just to clarify, that's a change you've made since the last meeting?
That's because the Esser, Esser budget can support more.
Right, but last week, when you first proposed the level services minus Esser along with the other three budgets, I'm very, very certain that that budget had the
I don't know.
Turkey Hill
I think so.
Fifth-grade band portion of music as a cut.
So, the Esser budget that existed before this evening did not have that cut because it had no specified cuts. It just had the total dollar value of the salaries being paid by, by the Esser grant subtracted from the level service budget. So, if you go and look, you'll see that the salary lines in the Esser budget match exactly the salary lines in the level service budget because we didn't go take those individual positions out. We didn't designate any positions. It was, to di- tonight is the first time you're hearing what positions we would actually recommend being cut as part of the cuts in an Esser budget. And this one does, it, the last one had no specified positions. This one does not have the music.
I'm referring to is the, the grid where you had each of the schools and then underneath it you had the cuts.
Might have been needs-based.
Yeah, it might have been, and there might have been, yeah, I didn't, I didn't create that. All right. Hang on.
Recording in progress.
The 5.0 had it, I think.
So, in the slide deck, and a lot of these slides are exactly the same as last week. Here's the level service budget with Esser cuts. And all it says is that there, we're looking at 12 positions. They would, currently funded in this current year through Esser are eight licensed educators and four tutors. That's, that's all I had. And then this is the new one.
To make this simple and save time, because time is marching on, I just want to be 100% clear on the understanding that if an override passes and therefore the budget with level services minus those cuts, it's your intention to keep fifth-grade band at Turkey Hill Elementary School during the day?
That's what I'm recommending. However, I just want to be crystal clear. It depends on what the school committee wants to pursue for an override. And if they pursue a lesser value, then I cannot guarantee that with an override, those positions will stand. It, they, assuming that the school committee is fine with the recommendation I brought this evening for the Esser cuts, those positions are not cut.
Understood. Thank you very much. I appreciate the effort.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, um, with a question? Yes, come on up.
TJ Loughlin, 207 Rolling Acres. I don't think the latest sheet is online. I was looking for the, the one you were pointing at. Only because I was looking for the 6% Esser, the one you were just showing.
It, it is not up there because I just finished it, uh, literally 20 minutes before this meeting started.
Perfect, yeah. So, my question, I guess, is I'm trying to reconcile the 8% starting point to a 6%, which I think is a difference of like over 400,000.
Yep, so, I can explain that again.
Okay, cool.
The 8% did not make actual position cuts.
Right, yeah.
It took a salary value.
Just off the bottom line.
Just off the bottom line. When you go in and you actually make cuts in the spreadsheets that we're working in, there are embedded formulas. We are, this year, negotiating with the paraprofessionals and the teachers. There's a salary reserve line in the budget. But the formula is if I remove a teacher or a paraprofessional, it is, the salary reserve line is reduced by the appropriate amount specific to that staff member.
So, I-
So, that's why
Yeah.
Salaries were coming off and the salary reserve was coming off. And, you know, we, we discussed how to approach this. I had a bottom-line figure for level service last week. We could have made cuts just in that amount. But I feel to be fair and transparent, we have said that 12 positions, eight licensed educators and four tutors, which are not full-time jobs, are currently paid for with the Esser grant. And we were looking to make a comparable number of cuts in terms of positions. And we traded out one position for the four tutors because we are going to keep those tutors and pay them out of a different grant. So, that's why that is so much less. Because you have actual salaries coming out and you have the impact of that specified staff member's impact on the salary reserve also coming out.
So, I think that's, that's what I'm curious about, is the salary reserve is listed at 359, but a difference between the 8%, over 8% to 6% is over 400,000. So, I don't know how, you'd have to like negate and earn-
Doesn't all come from the salary reserve?
Yeah, so I'm curious where, where else it came from, like-
Salary numbers for the individuals.
So, we were targeting, uh, 600,000 removal of Esser, I, I assume, right? So, we cut more than 600,000 in salaries for the level service minus Esser.
Correct, because we went after a number of positions to be cut. Because we have been telling the community for two years-
So, you didn't stop cutting at like 600. You were like, oh, we can keep going.
Correct. We've been telling the community for two and a half years that we understood that we would not be able to keep all of these positions. We told them there would be cuts. We told them they would not necessarily be the exact positions that were being paid with the Esser money.
Yep.
But that a comparable number of positions would go. Which is, again, why you have that number of positions. And again, it depends on who's sitting in that position. How many years' experience do they have? What's their education status? Because the more degrees they have, the higher their salary. So, when we decided which positions we would actually cut, we went into the sheets and pulled that person out. Their salary came out and all of the other things that are, um, connected, the reduction in the, the, uh, salary reserve line, you know, we have to look at health insurance, a- all of that. That's an actual price tag for that many cuts. It's not necessarily dollar for dollar.
Right.
I will say, trying to get dollar for dollar is really hard because you're taking this out and this is a salary. But oops, there goes the salary reserve. Oh, no, no insurance. Okay, it is, keeping in mind, we've asked her to do this seven times now.
Yeah, no doubt. But I think what I'm seeing, and I just, I'm just clarifying that. I wish I could see it on the, the PowerPoint, but I know you're busy, so I'm asking you instead.
It'll be posted.
Yeah, perfect. So, I think that means the 6% level service minus Esser actually equates to a million-dollar deduction from the budget, not a 600,000, right? Or, or even more than a million. It's like, it's like 1.1, actually.
No, the difference is, um, about 700,000. It's about 700.
1.3.
The, the difference between the level services and the level service minus Esser, level services has not changed. It's 25, 505, 985. And the newer level services minus Esser, this number that reflects those numbers is 24, 265, 82. You're, you're actually correct. So, it, it's actually mu- it's actually much less.
Yeah, the difference, um-
I'm folks saying this-
Terms of the influence when it was, wait a minute.
It's just a big number to pull an extra 2%. I mean, that's great. That's, you know, big, I was just curious where it came from. I can go sit down if you-
Well, like I said, if there are other, there are other money factors in there
Yep.
That also, um, play a, a role in there.
Gotcha. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Evan Waters, 245 Sunny Hill Road, Chair of the Finance Committee, but just asking questions for myself as a citizen.
Sure thing.
For the 6% level services minus Esser, do you actually have a dollar value over the town manager's 2.94? What the difference is between those two?
I just figured it out.
$714, sorry, you go.
I'm adding you all to my finance department.
I got it too.
You're all hired.
No, we were all-
No, my math is good.
Amazing, what a calculator on your phone.
Hey, I did it by hand.
Oh, okay.
And you came out with the same answer?
I was the teacher.
So, that number does not include the $230,000?
No.
Potential no. So, at absolute best, with that number, you could be looking at an additional $230,000 off at the top of that one, in theory.
In theory, pending that the stars align.
That's good to know. I've, I've already lost my other question, but the, the third question I had was, is there a standing policy in the school committee or the school department that says that the health insurance line sits in the school- in the school department side of town?
No.
There's nothing that I'm aware of.
I can tell you what I think the history is, but it's, it's anecdotal. So you have to go with that. It always was part of the town budget. It was not part of the school budget. The previous superintendent wanted to get the benefit of when the health insurance came lower, that it would be in her budget would be lower and she would have more money to spend. This is anecdotal. I don't know that it's true. And, and petitioned to have it changed.
Okay.
I'm not a big fan.
Yeah, in the, in the early aughts, it was separate. And at the time, the, the town contribution was 90%. And we went through a process over a couple of different years to get that down to 75%. And I believe at that time-
Is that when that was-
But I don't remember exactly what forced it in one direction or the other. But as it turns out, the timing was very similar to when Dr. Calms became superintendent. That all was part of that same budget crisis.
We also bargained separately.
Yeah.
Which is that as well.
Yeah.
It was all separate bargaining for health insurance at that point, too.
But it's no longer separate bargaining. Okay.
So I think those, all those factors-
Yeah, yeah. Actually, Ms. Foyle's recollection is, now to refresh my memory, the school department, before that occurred in that budget crisis of, of the early 2000s, it was the dot-com crisis, budgeted their health insurance benefits separately. And the problem is, is that when you do it that way, you lack the collective bargaining power of a bigger pool, if you will, right? So I know that the decision was made that it's one, it's one program for everybody and it's effectively non-negotiable, right? Or it's, that's a lever that the school committee and the union don't have.
Okay.
Unions.
We did get confirmation that I was probably right.
Probably right? Probably right works for me. Is there an appetite amongst the department or the committee to, to consolidate? I just, I can't imagine my company saying, where I worked, saying, sorry, this, the research department has one health insurance policy and the development department has a separate health insurance policy, but they're really paid for out of the same purse, but we're going to have them run by two separate entities.
Evan, they're the same policy.
I am well aware they're the same policy, so I'm asking-
It's just in our budget. My personal, I mean, we haven't talked about this, but my personal opinion would be, take it. I mean, I find the comparison difficult between departments when we are responsible for our health insurance and they are not. For example, the 3.0 budget, if we were to get rid of our increase in health insurance comes to 2.35. So really, our increase in that 3.0 budget was 2.35. When other companies, other departments, if they got a 6% increase this year, their increase was really like eight. But I couldn't figure that out.
While the side-by-side comparison is difficult, I think that what, what it does do is force the school committee to look at their all-in costs when it comes to bargaining and budgeting, right? And understanding that there's an outs, you know, so if we were to do it separately, for every dollar we added in a salary or a position, for every position we added, that would have some effect on a different line that was a shared line with the town, right? A good example of where that sort of exists right now is in the Worcester County assessment, right, where we have non-professional, non-teaching staff that's part of that and it's a, it's a shared, it's a shared cost that sits outside of the school department budget. That, but that's not anything that we have any lever over. Once a, once a staff member is retired, they're retired, like we have no authority to do anything. In this case, we do. And, and I would propose a different view, which is bake the share of health insurance into the library, the police department, the, all of the other departments to show what the actual, you know, a closer representation of a fully burdened cost. You know, I, I referred to funny numbers earlier. The funny numbers are all over the place. You and I have talked about the representation of the police department budget. I mentioned it, I think, last night publicly. You know, I mean, you can, you can cut that 100 ways from Sunday. You can say, okay, here's our, here's our CBA, you know, obliged number. Here's our additional services, whatever, whatever, whatever. In actuality, it's six-odd percent plus the 5%, you know, 5.7% increase in health insurance. Why not show a fully burdened number for each department?
You've sort of read my mind.
I wouldn't care as long as it's-
Well, my thought process is the finance committee has nothing to do over the summer, so.
Are you bored already?
Oh, yeah.
Well, at least one member will be working on the capital plan with us.
That's true, that's true. But I, I'm, I'm curious as to whether or not perhaps there should be some type of, and I have no idea who this needs to come from, I would assume the executive, but does it make sense to have some sort of a standardized approach across the entire town to say, this is how you're going to, not develop your budgets, but this is how you're going to represent your budgets? Because this entire process has been, well, we're at 5%, well, we're actually at 12%, but this person's really at 2% and it's, it's an-
Very difficult.
Absolute nightmare.
Mr. Evans, if you don't, Mr. Waters, excuse me, not Mr. Evans. Evan Waters, Mr. Waters, it's late.
Almost 10, two nights in a row.
If you don't mind, let me, let me offer another thing where, you know, the, very much related to how numbers are being misrepresented, in my opinion. And I think that I would like the, the finance committee to dig into this.
Don't have enough to do.
Potentially as early as tomorrow night. Well, it's very-
We will be.
It's very relevant to, to the discussion that we're having, which is, you know, there are numbers getting thrown around about, you know, the net increase on the budget for different departments. A number was thrown around last night of 170 or 180,000, right? Which, to me, doesn't wash when you're talking about 197,000 just in general government, police department, 139,000, fire, 36, DPW, 99, public buildings and facilities. Like, all of a sudden, it becomes pretty clear that those numbers are a lot greater than 180,000 in increases. And what's happening here is, is that there's a lot that's not being included, right? And I, but I don't know the math and that math has not been represented in the town manager's budget. So I would like to understand that, if the finance committee could get to a, what are we actually talking about in terms of this fantasy 180,000 number? That is the increased number for, for the town side of the budget. The other number that I would like an explanation of, because it was referred to in public comment here last week and was also referred to in two slides in the town manager's budget report, which attempted to show the school committee portion moving from 52% to 53% of the total budget. It assumed the savings in retired debt. But my contention is, is that most of that savings has nothing to do with dollars that are discretionary dollars that we can go and spend, right? It's funded largely by excludable debt, meaning that that is a number that's taken off the top of your tax bill. And it's also debt that is serviced by revolving funds.
I'm going to make a motion for us to table this part of the discussion. It is not germane to the school board and it is 10 o'clock, or almost 10 o'clock. We gotta go.
I'm, I'm done. I, I, I accept your criticism. It's very relevant to the conversation because our budget is getting thrown around all over town right now and ridiculous numbers are being associated with validating why that number should be what it is. And I'm trying to get to the bottom of, why is our budget being portrayed in a different way than the rest of the town?
I get it, but like, this is not the time. We got, we got people that want to ask questions. We should take their questions and then we should vote on the override.
It was 51% to 52%, just-
Okay, thank you.
For the record.
There you go, for the record. Okay.
And it's 512,000 in excludable debt that's coming off, is your other number.
Which has nothing to do with discretionary money.
And the last one was salary reserve line is for also collective, are your negotiations that are coming up. Which is why they can't be touched too much either.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else with any questions? Anybody online? I don't see anybody online.
I do not.
And no one here, so then we're going to close this portion of the question and answer and we're going to go on to the override discussion and vote. So what this comes down to is, obviously, it was made extremely clear, and it should have been, that we need to know exactly why we are asking for the number we are asking for. That we have to have the information to provide the town with exactly what they would get for that amount of money. Last week, when we had this discussion, it appeared from amongst us that we were looking for the level service minus ESER for the reasons that we have talked about tonight, that we have said repeatedly over the whole time the ESER money was in play, that we knew it was going away and we would plan for it and we have. So as far as an override amount that the three of us did the math for as we were sitting here, the difference between the ESER at 6.02% and the town manager's 2.97% is this 714,814. Is that the amount we are talking about or do we need to discuss other budgets? Where are we at on this?
I wanted to talk about the needs-based budget, but that's really the bare minimum. And looking at the amounts, it is so-
So close.
It's so close that I think it just makes sense. I mean, three of us just came up with the same number, sitting here. We all did the math. We didn't do the math on the needs-based budget. So to me, it makes sense to go for that amount for 714, 814. I can see an argument made for it being a slightly more round number.
Yeah, we, we could do 715 to make it a round number that perhaps might be easier for people.
Asking for a million felt like-
That's a lot of money.
A lot.
Well, this is a lot of money, too.
This, this somehow feels more palatable.
And this may come down.
Yeah, if we can get more, so.
This quirky situation plays out.
I, I really think the 714, 715, 715,000 would be a reasonable amount. I'd want to hear from Dr. Burnham if that's something, I mean, it's above the, the needs-based one, which I've been calling the bare minimum, which is still above what we're being given by the town manager's budget. So it's above the bare, bare minimum.
If, if we can fund more positions, I am not going to say no. I don't think any of my, my team would say no. But we understand this is a difficult decision to make, you know? Because it is an ask.
It is an ask. It is less of an ask than we thought we were dealing with. Tony?
If we're going to go through, and I will not take credit for this, but this is something that Brian said at last meeting. If we're going to go through the process of doing an override, it doesn't make sense to do all of that work to still end up with a, a product that we don't like. And I think that while we don't want to cut anything, if we do the, the minus ESER budget, given how it's basically double what the town manager has proposed and we really get everything we had planned on, that seems to be the one to do because it's in the middle between, you know, level funding and the bare minimum budget, as Laura aptly called it. And it's worth, you know, it's, it's worth the time and energy put in for an override. I, I just feel like if we go to the town and do an override and we end up with a clunker, like we have to cut positions that result in lower achievement on standardized testing, then all we've done is shot ourselves in the foot because we've spent that override bullet, which we don't get very often. I think Laura, you said it was like 1992?
1992, and it was over the library, not the school. They, sort of like we're being forced into this position by being underfunded.
But if we're going to take that shot-
Get it to the library.
I want to take the shot and make sure it's what we, what we want. I don't want to take that shot and like, you know, get, you know, 10% of what we want. So I, I would be in support of the ESER, minus ESER budget as our override number, especially given that it's now down to like 6%. So that's a good, that's a good target, I think.
And you're in agreement that I approached the cuts in the right way, thinking about positions and not trying to get to the previous dollar reduction?
Absolutely, because that was the-
That's more realistic.
That was the spirit of, of the discussion and-
For the last two plus years.
For the last two plus years, we, that has been the spirit of it.
It's also more fiscally conservative to do it that way. I, so I, I just want to offer a contrarian view, and I, I shared this with Carol this morning. I, I'm really struggling with this decision personally. And the reason why I'm struggling with it is because, first of all, I don't think it's going to pass. I have serious reservations, as I've said all along, on this, largely because of the mismanagement that has gone on and the lack of trust that exists between the citizens and the town. And I worry that it is going to distract from the, the more likely scenario, which is we live with whatever budget passes at town meeting. And we have work to do to go get as much as we can, to get as close to that number as we possibly can. And the discussion that will ensue is, well, if you get the override, the town is agreeing with you and you can have, you can have what you need then. But until then, you get this pittance. And I, we are, we have been backed into a no-win situation here, in my view. The, you know, the game theory puts us at a disadvantage in either direction. And I, you know, I know I'm beating a dead horse, Tony. I know you don't want to hear it. I know you don't think it's relevant. This is extremely frustrating, saddening, irresponsible. I, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm insulted by the leadership of our town that they have put it, put us in this situation. Mr. Jeffrey said last night that, you know, he and I are friends. He is really putting that friendship to the test. I, I don't think it's fair. I, I think that he has terribly misrepresented the situation. And, and I intend, if I do vote for this, I'm still a no-vote on the omnibus budget. And I still think that the finance committee should vote to recommend against the omnibus budget. And I think we have work to do to go and amend that budget to get to something that is more palatable, with or without a pending override. Thank you for humoring me.
Mr. Leighton, what is your thought?
Yes, thank you. I would tend to agree with Mr. Scullinbrini in regards to Mr. Beardmore's point. I think the chair of the select board is up for reelection in 2025, so I think the voters can make their decision now.
He's not running again.
He said repeatedly, he's not running.
Yeah, he said he's not running, so it's not-
But that, that's fine. That's fine. Okay, so we have been around the horn here, except for me, and I think this is the only way to go. If you, I agree with Tony, if you're going to do it, make it worth doing. If the townspeople don't want to spend the money or can't spend the money, and I want to, I get that. I, I have people in town that can't, that I know that can't spend the money. I get it. But what it comes down to is, you know, what, what do the people want? So it would be my recommendation to set the number for an override at 715,000. So I would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to set the amount for the override at 715,000.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor, roll call vote.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Scullinbrini?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambault?
Yes. So as far as that goes, Mr. Waters has the information he needs and I will send an email to the select board chair.
Do you need to make it more specific at all?
Do I need to make it more specific at all? You're hinting.
Are you hinting?
You're hinting.
Do you need it more specific in terms of just an override number or an override number to support?
To support.
An override to support the school system, yeah. We should definitely specify.
Okay, so what do we want to craft for language to amend this?
So
You're a lawyer up here.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
I think that we have, I think that we've stated our intent here. This, I would leave it to our Chair to negotiate and work through the language with the Select Board in terms of a recommended warrant article and how this would ultimately come about. The town, by the way, should participate in this. This number should be bigger because it became evident last night that our Salary Administration Plan employees, that is underfunded by about 30%. And there's no game plan to deal with that problem. So, you know, if you think the burden has been shifted upon us already, there's a whole other shoe to drop here that our executive leadership has not dealt with. So here's an opportunity for them to, you know, join with us and do this right and make the town whole.
So in doing that and working with the Select Board and asking them, I assume they would want to say restoration of so many positions and that type of thing. Do we get that specific?
My understanding is the warrant only needs to say to support the school district or something like that.
Just, okay, all right. So I will propose to support the education of Lunenburg students. And then I will talk to the Select Board and see how they would like that to be crafted.
I do agree with Mr. Beardmore, though. We are still going to have to pursue the budget.
Oh, that's next week's conversation. Yes, absolutely. I agree. I agree. Okay. Anything else on override, then? Did we take, we did take the vote, yes. Okay. There's too many nights in a row being here for this long. All right, next is public comment. Is there any future further? Not future, well, future and further public comment.
I wasn't going to make one. If you guys talked less, I wouldn't have time to put together my thoughts. Mary Foyle, 985 Flat Hill Road. I'm actually speaking very much as a parent with the knowledge of an employee, as well as a high school employee particularly. So I'm from a small town, half the size of Lunenburg. I'm from a public, non-regional high school that had class sizes well under half the size of what Lunenburg class sizes are. I never took an AP class. We only offered one in math. It was many years ago. That was not my forte. As a teacher now, I realize how lacking my high school career was. And not because my teachers didn't work hard. They were simply working with the resources that they had, and those were the resources. When I graduated from school, I did not, I'm a small-town girl, but I did not apply there. I don't live there. That is not an accident. I'm sitting here now, and I'm wondering if I'm putting my same children in the spot that I was in as a student. I bring this up, I don't, I appreciate all the work that everyone's doing. And I know right now with the budget process, we're in a half marathon because of the timelines. But looking out into the future, we need to be thinking like ultra marathon or Iron Man with what's happening. And people have sat in these chairs, and you guys too have heard me say this before. When we decided not to regionalize the powers that be who decided that, there is a decision that we then have to fund our schools a certain way. And that might mean, for some of those specialized classes, when you get higher into specificity for students, subjects that they're interested, career choices, college choices, because we're such a small school, that might mean smaller class sizes. As a parent, I feel like I really need to know in the next few years, and maybe for one of my children, it's too late, what is the plan? Because the decision I'm going to make for my child's schooling is going to depend on what the plan is and what kind of school system we're going to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a comment this evening?
As a parent, Ms. Foyle, I could not agree with you more.
All right, then. If there's no further public comments, do we have any committee reports?
Oh, I had a comment. I just
Oh, well, I asked any more comments. I didn't say
Oh, I'm sorry.
Help self.
It's late. I wanted to say for the people still awake, you need to come to town meeting. We need you to come to town meeting. Like, I cannot say this enough times. I've talked to a bunch of parents who are like, well, I was going to try and come, but I got stuff. No, you've got to come. It's May 4th. You've got to put it in your calendar now, and we need you to come. We need the people who support the school system and the school district and students and maintaining home prices and having a community with children who are educated. We need you to come to town meeting, May 4th. Sometimes these votes come down to single digits in this town. Please don't regret not coming to town meeting. You have to come to town meeting on May 4th. And that was it.
Okay. Anybody else? Before I miss somebody? Okay, committee reports.
I did the PTO.
Okay.
I did the PTO on, it feels like forever ago, but I think it was Monday. They're doing teacher appreciation on Friday with a coffee warm-up. The special someone dance has now raised $11,572 in total, which is fantastic.
Do you do that once a week?
They terrify me because that was absolutely amazing. They are planning their spring event. They're not doing Hollis Hills this year. They're going to do a cruise night. They are doing it in conjunction with a lot of people, the Boys and Girls Club, the Food Pantry, the Lions. They've got a whole bunch of people on board. And it is going to be Wednesday, May 22nd, with a rain date of May 29th probably. And they're going to be doing kids' games and raffles and maybe a DJ. They've been talking about stuff. It's going to be car show, and it's going to be a real community event, not just the PTO. So they're working on something for everyone. So May 22nd, you guys should definitely come. And Mr. Adams talked about the solar eclipse, which is going to be happening on a school day.
Very cool.
Around a little bit before dismissal time. So the primary and elementary school kids will be in school during that. So that's very exciting.
No recent meetings to report. I did want to mention that I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Stevenson in civics class a few weeks ago, and that was a really, a really fun event. You couldn't hear me, you couldn't hear me just once. You had to hear me in stereo? And anyway, so getting to talk with students from a school committee seat is, it was really enjoyable. I had a great time. There will be an Athletic Advisory Committee meeting on the 18th. I will be distributing an agenda to the Booster Club leaders later in the week. And I will also be encouraging all athletic parents to attend that meeting. There's some really good fundraising opportunities that have come our way, and I want to get that word out and see if there's interest in looking at some new fundraising approaches. And I also frankly think that we need to build awareness and participation amongst the parents whose kids play sports in Lunenburg. Lastly, and I know this is a meeting that we all kind of attended last week, the Finance Committee meeting, the police chief brought up our comfort dogs advancing age. And Hank is going to need to be replaced in the not-too-distant future. The issue is not that Hank is in ill health, but at his age and the breed of dog, they tend to be arthritic, and you don't want kids hanging on an arthritic dog. So there isn't a plan. There isn't a plan yet to fund a Hank replacement. Officer McNamara, actually Hank belongs to Officer McNamara, and this was his doing when he took the School Resource Officer position. The town now supports the vet bills and food and that sort of thing, but the dog belongs to Officer McNamara. I think that Hank is a town asset. He's a police department asset, and he's a school asset.
100%.
And he absolutely needs to be, we need a Hank Jr.
He's our biggest celebrity.
And so I think that, you know, potentially a unifying opportunity for us coming out of budget season should be fundraising for Hank Jr. And I believe the cost will be about $19,000 all in with training and whatnot.
How much?
$19,000.
That's good, that's a good
That's a deal.
Yeah, that's a good deal compared to
I mean, worth his weight in gold.
Absolutely, absolutely. And after budget season, we'll put it on the docket, see what we can do. Mr. Leighton, do you have any committee reports?
Yes, there were three Finance Committee meetings since we've last reported. Along with the dog, the chief was also talking about a second dog potentially for really more of the community, too, because there is more of a need for it in the entire community. So that would be exciting to see in the future as well. Back on February 21st, the meeting was mostly on the budget process and review of the FY '25 target budget. There was a preliminary budget, assumptions, and a lot of unknowns. They did mention something important, too, I thought, was free cash is not for the operating budget. So it's good to know. On February 22nd, there was a cancellation of the, there was no land use presentation. There was a council on aging in library. An interesting fact was 30% of Lunenburg is elderly. They plan to increase the meal site manager hours to full-time, and that would actually add the insurance cost. There's a lot of hard questions and a lot of challenging questions to that, about the expenses. And they also kind of fought back a little bit, too, on that, that it really is, it is hard to hire part-time people. With the library, they were adding library hours. They weren't, excuse me, they weren't adding insurance as it was already on those employees. And there were also discussions about whether it was a want versus a need for a hearing loop technology. They also talked about the override. Carol was actually at the meeting, stated how we were actually talking about this in October. The town meeting will first, they talked about the process of the town meeting will first attempt to pass the balanced budget brought by the town manager, then the override. The Chair said it wasn't really a shot in the dark numbers. We have the budgets. We just need the most up-to-date school budget. And he also gave data on overrides in Massachusetts since 2015. There were 315 attempts, and they passed 70% of the time out of overrides that were school-based. 82 out of 128 passed, which is about 64%. So it's not really necessarily a 50-50 split. And then also, they talked about how the Select Board should have to put it on the ballot on a special election if the citizens pass it, and they would have 90 days. There was a motion four to two that passed to put together a warrant article override to discuss on the 7th and the 14th to fund the needs-based services across town. And the Chair mentioned that they should be working parallel with other departments, like the Select Board and the school committee. And then on the 29th, it was the IT Department mentioned that the schools were going to be upgrading their phone system to a voice-over-up system, but they didn't know any particulars. The police talked about recruiting and retaining was a challenge, but the statewide average is 2.4 officers per thousand, and Lunenburg is currently at 1.5 officers per thousand. They were mentioning a possible second SRO next year. They also want to seek a comfort dog in the community in the future and that their budget will meet their needs. They also talked about the grant writer, and they're to be sending a letter to the Select Board, which they actually talked about yesterday. The budget deadlines, and that it was really, somebody had to show the numbers, whether it was the Finance Committee or the Select Board, that it was kind of in line with the Select Board. The budget was in line with the Select Board's budget direction, and the public only sees occasional meetings. And the people who are most in-depth with the finances, the Finance Committee, so maybe it made more sense for them to deal with the override. They discussed the school budget options and also potentially waiting on the Town Council to discuss options of what they have for the override. The Board of Assessors, they have their preliminary assessed values for FY '24 available for public review beginning Monday, February 26th. They also talked about the override. If it was, for example, it was 3.25 million on a $32.5 million budget, that would be a 10% increase to people's taxes, or a 1 million budget could be over, say, 3%. They expect the Finance Committee to be asking questions about the superintendent on specific line items, like in all of the other departments, and that the Town Council should go to the Select Board, that the override should also be put forward by the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Leighton. The only report I have is that tomorrow evening, the Master Planning Committee is meeting before the Finance Committee meeting. So another busy evening tomorrow evening. Topics for future discussion, we obviously will be talking about the budget that we need to put forth at our next meeting. It is also our budget hearing, and we need a number to go into the notice, the legal notice for the budget hearing. The number we put in doesn't mean that is the number we decide on, but there needs to be a number to go in. So what, I almost forgot. What number should we put in? I would propose, just because it's just a placeholder, it's nothing to get too excited about, but I would propose putting in either the four or the 5.4.
To put in for what?
We have to advertise about our budget hearing.
Okay.
And that has to be advertised at least seven days prior to the budget hearing. So the budget hearing is the 20th of March. So we have to get something, like quickly, out. So
2.94% is what we're stuck with, though, right?
No, we're not stuck at all. This is a different issue.
This is pertaining to the budget that we are likely to support and pass.
Right.
So I would suggest that we do the 23, excuse me, the 24-265, which is the level services minus ESER, that we just based the override.
The override one?
Yeah, because that's fine. People will have questions about the override, and I would love to answer them.
That's fine. So that's the one we're going to put in because we can change that. That's not a problem.
Should we have a joint session with the Board of Selectmen? Have they come and asked questions directly of people? Or is it just?
One of our representatives from the Board of Selectmen has been extremely conscientious about coming and asking questions. However, that is not the same with the rest of the board.
Should we do a joint session? Because it seems that there are a lot of, there's a lot of confusion over things that we've covered repeatedly in meetings.
I don't know that that would be fruitful. I can ask.
I mean, I saw you offered to answer questions.
Yes, I offered to have coffee with anybody and go through the budget, any item number that, and I haven't been taking up on it yet, but fair to say that was at like 11 o'clock last night, so.
It just seemed to be a mischaracterization that this snuck up on us when we've been talking about things for a long time.
Right, right.
I'm just going to say this, like, my availability is maxed out.
Right, okay.
We just have too many meetings, and they go too long.
And they go too long. They go very long. I can ask if any, I can invite anyone that is, that has questions to come to one of our meetings and answer the questions.
The public is invited.
And the public is invited to the budget hearing. All right, why don't I do that? Why don't I, when I send over the override number, I will also remind them, and I will be most likely at the Select Board meeting next week, and I can remind them that it is a public hearing, and anyone with further questions are welcome to come and ask.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Eventually, I want to talk about getting a budget director in soon.
A finance director?
Finance director. As long as you're not looking to cut the position, I can just go ahead and post it.
Yeah, she can post it.
I think we should.
I do not want to cut that position. I am adamant that that is not a position that should be cut.
Nope, that can be posted.
Extremely evident over the course of the last several weeks.
I don't know, I think she's been doing pretty good.
Okay, is there anything else from anybody? Or is 10:20 late enough?
It's good.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please? And a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Leighton?
Aye.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Skolbrini?
Aye.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody who came. I very much appreciate it.